Good morning. Good morning and welcome to the May 7, 2019, meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Here.
Supervisor Christie?
Here.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Valadez?
Present.
Chairman Elias?
Present, I'm present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Very good, thank you. We have our invocation this morning to be offered by Reverend Kelly Dick from the Sawarito Christian Church, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Supervisor Valadez. So if you're able to, please stand and join the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray together. Loving and compassionate God of many names, we give you so much thanks for this day you have entrusted us with. It is indeed a time to rejoice in the beauty and wonder that constantly surrounds us, including your sacred presence that is in each of us. God, we come from our diverse identities and backgrounds to this shared space to do the important work of guiding our community. We hold in gratitude those who offer their time and talents in public service, knowing that this work is not easy and requires levels of deep wisdom to do so. So we hold in gratitude those who have come here with specific concerns, knowing that the call of conscience is one of the holiest gifts we have. May the work that is done here be holy and focused on the needs of the whole community. God, to those who lead comes great responsibility. So we pray for an extra measure of courage and patience, of fairness and integrity, of energy and wisdom and vision to those who are called to lead and serve this city. God, we pray that you empower their thoughts and actions of all who are here so that we might all treat each other in love. Open our ears so we may hear the cries of the hungry, the frightened, the lonely and the oppressed. Open our eyes so we might see the deep needs of our community. And ignite our hearts so that we will have the courage to be bold and brave as we seek to do the work. And God, when we cling to the ways that are safe and familiar, wake us up, shake us up, stir us up, and breathe your holy compassionate breath into each of us. In the name of all that is holy and all that is human, we pray on this day. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much for coming to today's board meeting. I appreciate all of you and all the different perspectives that you come with. I would encourage you today to think about these things. Number one, think about the beauty that surrounds us here in the desert. It's been a beautiful spring. There's flowers everywhere, and particularly the color yellow has been with us over the last month. And so we should all think about that today as we find ourselves getting frustrated, or emotional, or angry, because this is going to be a charged debate over the course of the day today. Anybody who gets vulgar, I will have them removed. Anybody who... See, the lights came on, just like that.[228.12][228.12](Laughter). It's a sign, good lord. Oh, no. What I'd say is that (Laughs) what I'd say also is that if you're yelling from your seat, you're going to be removed as well. This has been a pattern of behavior that we've seen here at the Board of Supervisors, and over the last three or four months, we've had to change our rules to make sure that everybody understands the deal before we get started. So if you're doing any of those things, or if you're doing anything that I, as the chair, deem to be out of order, you will be asked to leave. So please consider those things as you conduct yourself today. I think it's all fine. Don't worry, we appreciate all opinions. But we're going to do pause for pause, so let's get that beautiful animal up here who gave us an emphatic bark at the end of the pledge of allegiance. Somehow that seemed ironic, too.
Good morning, members of the board. Good morning, everyone. We have Titan with us this morning. He is very excited about the pledge of allegiance, obviously.[298.12][298.12](Laughter). And he would love to be that excited in your home as well. He is a survivor. He has survived distemper, a disease that makes him have a little bit of a shake. It's no longer painful. He took pain meds for it, and he's fine now. He's about eight months old. He also survived pneumonia at a very young age. And for a puppy as young as he is to have survived all of that is really incredible, and it's a testament to his foster mom, Kaylee Rain. So if you're interested, we have a Name Your Own Price for dogs four months and up. He's eight months, that counts. And that's going on for the entire month of May because it is National Pet Month, so we are trying to get more pets into homes. And that covers quite a lot of things, like microchip, up-to-date vaccinations, everything you need to get you started with a new pet. And that will be going on all month long if you're interested, and we look forward to seeing you at pack. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Titan, let's see if we can get somebody to adopt you and take it home. Seems like a good dog. Okay, we have a presentation on item five, Chuck Cutino Community Leadership Award. Supervisor Christie.
Every year, I have the great distinct honor to be able to present the Chuck Cutino Community Leadership Award, and it's named after the longtime volunteer and founder of the Born Again Jocks Association, known as the Baja Club down in Green Valley, and the founder and driver behind the Green Valley Canoa Preserve Park, where the softball complex down there is named in his honor. Nominees must be 45 years of age or older and have a strong record of volunteerism, and today we have a winner of that and recipient of that award who definitely meets that criteria, and that is Mr. Chuck Hill. He is of Green Valley, and he has demonstrated leadership, commitment, creativity, and dedication during his many years of volunteer service in Pima County and in southern Arizona. As a board member of the Santa Cruz Valley Bicycle Advocate Committee, Chuck used his software and design talents to create and maintain their website. He also serves as the organization's treasurer. Chuck created the Santa Cruz Valley Bike Map and has updated it three times for reprinting over the past seven years. He compiled and posted ride descriptions and group ride contacts on the bike club's website and created a poster of group ride contacts at the request of Green Valley Recreation. Chuck is the unofficial coordinator for mountain bike rides and trail maintenance in the region. He has organized and led annual Green Valley Ride of Silence for the past 13 years. He is also a longtime volunteer with the Green Valley Fire Corps Program. He's an active member of the Green Valley Recreation Camera Club. He assists Green Valley Recreation in their Senior Games Program by timing cycling and running events, and he was awarded the Bicycle Advocate of the Year in 2012 by the Tucson Pima County Bicycle Advisory Committee. In 2016, Chuck received the Rotary Club of Green Valley Community Service Award for a non-rotarian who lives in Green Valley for outstanding long-term volunteer service that benefits the community. Chuck's great attitude, friendly neighbor, and many significant contributions make him well-deserving of this award. And I'll briefly read what is on the award. It's the Chuck Cutino Community Leadership Award that is presented to Chuck Hill for exceptional commitment and service as a volunteer leader, improving our community, and being a great friend to the region of Green Valley and Sarawita? Sararita? Sarita?[589.36][589.36](Laughter). Sawarita. And presented to him, May 7, 2019, it's a great honor and privilege to present this award to Mr. Chuck Hill.[603.82][603.82](Applause).
Thank you so much. I didn't realize that was going to take so long, so I'm not going to say anything, really, other than I'm up there with some good company. Jim Brewer from Green Valley and Bill Adamson from Green Valley have been previous recipients of this, and Bill is right over here. Bill, could you stand up for a second?[633.32][633.32](Applause). Bill, I said stand up. Bill is our Energizer Bunny in Green Valley. Everyone knows him. Bill knows everyone. He's done so much for bicycle advocacy, and I pretty much work behind him, behind the scenes, okay? Every time Bill calls me up, he's got something for me to do. Just the other day, "Hey Chuck, RTA number two is coming up. How about if we propose to do a Green Valley Loop, like the Tucson Loop? Could you do a map?" Or, you know, I'm always fixing his computer.[677.48][677.48]"Hey Chuck, I've got a PowerPoint presentation coming up. Can you give me a hand?" So anyway, hey, I really appreciate that, this award. I'm not going to say much more, except for one of the things that I'm proud that our community does is we have an event called the Ride of Silence every third Wednesday of May. This is a national and international observance event to honor and remember those cyclists killed and injured on our highways. And we will be having this event in Green Valley. There's also one in Tucson. We think in Green Valley, we're unique. We have close to 100 riders that show up every year. This year, we will be remembering the life of a young 15-year-old boy who tragically lost his life on July 3. And we will be remembering the life of Mason Taylor during our event. It starts at 5:30 near Esperanza and Abrego, and we'd like to see you there. Thank you.[748.10][748.10](Applause). All right, our next presentation is item six on the regular agenda. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. I'm going to make this presentation for Home Ownership Month to Terry Luna, Adam Stewart, Pima Federal Credit Union, Randy Roger, Barbara Lasky-Wilson, Annalisa Moreno, Tucson Association of Realtors, and Patty Gonzalez and Danny Ne. So we've got a whole crowd of people. Please come forward and meet me up here at the podium. Who gets the... Okay. Home Ownership Month, obviously critical to all of us and all these good people who work within the industry of providing housing to people. I've obviously been a big proponent of affordable housing throughout my career. So this morning, as we contemplate the words of this proclamation and hear a few short speeches (Laughter) from our friends, I'd ask you to also think about the issue of fair housing and how important it is to all of us, and think of the seven protected classes of people and how we go about doing our business, because it's a critical issue for all of us. It's getting more and more important every day in every single community in America. And I would also add, particularly on behalf of my friends in District 3, the rural issues are becoming more and more and more important, and the shortages of housing in rural America are really problematic to all of us. So just make that special note as I read this proclamation this morning. I even cleaned my glasses this morning so I could read it right. See if I can do it. Whereas, more than 70 years ago, the United States committed itself to providing a decent home and a suitable living environment for every resident of the nation, a promise that has not been fully realized. Whereas safe, decent, and affordable housing is pivotal, beyond providing basic shelter, it positively affects the economy and improves the quality of our environment. And whereas, the United States is the best housed nation on earth, but for a growing and more economically diverse number of people, including families, children, seniors, and those with disabilities, affordable housing in quality communities remains out of reach. And whereas, 15.6 million U.S. households pay more than half of their income for housing, and more than 200,000 families, 564,708 people live on the streets, or in cars, in shelters, or in subsidized transitional housing. Whereas federal housing assistance is diminishing, so our affordable housing needs must be met with the unwavering dedication of a mission-driven, nonprofit community and a forward-thinking private sector willing to partner with state and local governments to fill in housing gaps. And whereas, over the years, the public and private sectors have learned much about the cost-effective provision of affordable housing and why unmet housing needs in our communities persist. And whereas, each June, the Pima County Housing Center holds the Public Home Ownership Fair that includes nonprofit housing counseling agencies, realty professionals, mortgage lenders, and other housing professionals. I was one of those "other housing professionals." What does that mean? Anyways, now therefore, be it resolved, the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of June 2019 to be Home Ownership Month and urges all those who need or desire a better housing situation to attend the 2019 fair on Saturday, June 8, at the Tucson Association of Realtors, 2445 North Tucson Boulevard, passed and adopted this 7th day of May, 2019. Be generous, give a round of applause for that. That's important to all of us.[1081.11][1081.11](Applause). All right. Who's going to speak this morning? Marcos is going to start? Okay? Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chairman Elias, Board of Supervisors, and everyone in the audience. Just like to encourage everybody to join us on June 8 to learn about how to become a homeowner, and if you're already a homeowner, learn about resources that can help you keep your home. And thanks again to all our partners, Tucson Association of Realtors, Pima Federal Credit Union, and Community Investment Corporation. Thank you.[1120.21][1120.21](Applause).
I would just quickly like to say thank you to Supervisor Elias and to the Pima Housing Center, all the work that the county does on behalf of the nonprofits and the partnerships with the nonprofits, our for-profit lender and real estate partners, and as well as government. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you again.[1151.33][1151.33](Applause). All right, now we're going to gather over here and take a picture, so let's put Marcos in front because he's good-looking. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you. Okay, we have one more presentation to do, and that is on the addendum, on page 2, item 10, Special Recognition of Pep Incorporated and Pep Tech. Chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Supervisor Bronson is going to make this presentation to Wayne Tucker. Wayne, are you here? There you are. Come on board, and we'll get this thing taken care of.
And John couldn't be here today. John Arnold, who is in Pima County, he is Project Pep. But let me read the proclamation. Whereas Portable Practical Educational Preparation, Inc. was founded with a mission to improve the quality of rural life in August 1967 by Dr. John David Arnold aboard La Tartuga, a converted 1957 Chevrolet school bus named by Barcelo, farm workers, students attending class in basic education and English. And whereas Pep Tech High Schools were chartered in 1995 as a public alternative high school with a mission to provide quality education services for students ages 14 through 21 in grades 9 through 12, and celebrates 24 years of educational services. And whereas Pep Tech staff and administrators are committed to providing each student with the help and support he or she needs for a positive high school experience in preparation for post-secondary education or entering the workforce upon graduation. And whereas Pep Tech's Celestino Fernandez Learning Center in Tucson provides a rigorous curriculum aligned with Arizona academic standards and offers core courses and elective courses, extracurricular activities, academic support, support services, flexibility and schedule, and an Arizona high school diploma. And whereas, Celestino Fernandez Learning Center enhances student learning by promoting student engagement with local colleges, youth leadership conferences, summer school, and dual enrollment in college courses. And whereas Pep, Inc. and Pep Tech provide leadership and educational opportunities for youth throughout Arizona, now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim special recognition of Pep, Inc. and Pep Tech and congratulates their students, teachers, staff members, administrators, and school governing board for collaborating with our community, and wishes them many, many more years of continued educational success, passed and adopted this 7th day of May, 2019. Congratulations to Pep Tech, and as the supervisor who represents much of rural Pima County, all the way from Ajo to Robles Junction, to Three Points, to Ava Valley, to Picture Rocks, to EriBaca, we know how important Pep Tech is, and want to thank you for your services. And do you want to say a few words? Let's congratulate you.[1467.41][1467.41](Applause).
I can be very brief, much within the proclamation itself, so I appreciate you very much.
And identify yourself, I know you.
I am Wayne Tucker. I'm the superintendent of Pep Tech High Schools. We are spread across the sort of the bottom of the state of Arizona. I just came in from Yuma last night, where we have two schools in Yuma County. It's rather unusual for people like myself, educators, like myself and my staff, who choose to work with these at-risk youth, kids who are likely not to get a high school diploma. We don't usually get the accolades because our kids aren't the high flyers. They don't go directly to 4U universities usually. We try to get them into Pima College and AWC and Cochise College. And so we don't really look for these kinds of things. We tend to count our blessings in the victories of each sort of life that we impact and every sort of kid we get over the line and out into the world with a diploma and certifications and those sorts of things. So when something like this comes along, it's very, very much appreciated, and I really appreciate the board and all the taxpayers of Arizona for continuing to support us. So thank you very much.
It's an investment well deserved.
Yes.[1551.82][1551.82](Applause).
Thank you very much. We have some people that are here from Ajo that need to get back out there to their hometown, so we're going to quickly go to item 11 on the regular agenda, on page 3, Ajo Improvement Company, including Resolution 2019-30. Supervisor Bronson, please.
I'll move the item.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller.
This was a pretty confusing item on this agenda. So I want to make sure I'm understanding this. There are two water companies that actually serve the Ajo area. Both of these companies get their water from Ajo Freeport. Ajo...
It's not water, there are two utilities.
Utilities, yeah. Yep. And Ajo IC is the parent company of the Arizona Water Company, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And they're looking for rate increases for water, electric, and wastewater. So we have these two water companies, and it says that Arizona Water has 980 connections for water and electric. Arizona Water has 1,032 connections for sewer. And then you have this other company called ADWID. And the question I wanted, I had there, they only have 133 residential customers. They are not looking for an increase, however, they will be impacted as a result if they buy their water from the company that is looking for the increase. Okay? And the Ajo IC is governed by the Arizona Corporation Commission. The reason for the increases that they state is they did roughly $47.8 million in capital improvements over a period of appears to be 10 to 15 years, and of that 20.7 million of the improvements was for wastewater. And then the question I have is, it appears right now, based on the information, that AD, the Arizona Water Improvement District, that buys the water from this company, their rates are different than the other company. So the water's coming from the same place, but why are their rates different?
It's part of the challenge.
Okay. So they're going to have different rates as a result of this rate increase that affects both of them. So that was very confusing. And they are charging the higher rates. ADWID is charging higher rates. And Freeport Mine is getting the reduced rate from Ajo Freeport. So Ajo Freeport provides water to three entities. And it was stated in here, they're getting that reduced rate because they did capital improvements over the years, but there was no documentation or anything supporting this. Does anybody have any information on this?
I don't think... Nicole isn't here, she did most...
Mr. October?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a matter that's actually before the Corporation Commission. On the 21st of May, we have filed as an intervenor status and objecting to the rate increase of... On the 21st of May, we have filed as an intervenor status and objecting to the rate increases at the magnitude that they are, primarily because many of the prior capital improvements were not pre-approved by the Corporation Commission to be included in a future rate hike or adjustment in that they could be characterized as public relations investments by Freeport MacBrand for the Ajo community. And so, therefore, that's probably what distorts these rates as much as they are. There's a lot of speculation as to why the rates are going the way they are, but that's at this point speculation. And I think our, the resolution just simply supports the position that we've taken as an intervenor in the rate case. And we're hoping that basically it either gets continued, because it's been continued a couple of times because the Ajo community has been very active in opposing these rate increases. And I think it's indicative of the transition from a company-owned mining community to one that's now trying to either stay, be independent or be sold. And that's probably part of the problem.
Okay. And it looks like they've already agreed to revise their rates from what they originally had submitted. They're down significantly, but there's still huge increases over, looks like the electric and water are over five years. They now want the sewer to go up 384% over seven years. And I guess there's two different companies that have done capital investments. You have the mine has-
Has a mine.
-has done in the Freeport. And then also AIC did their capital investment. So, are you talking about both or just AIC? Because AIC is the only one applying for the rates.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Supervisor Miller, it's mostly AIC, which is really wholly owned subsidiary of Freeport MacBrand. And, you know, what you're seeing here is the aging out of the utility system that had to be basically replaced over a period of four, five years, maybe five to 10 years ago. And now there's an attempt to recover that capital cost associated with utility replacements.
Okay.
And I think the other confusing thing here, and then, well, the other significant thing, it's very confusing. This is, this is unique. Ajo was a company town. And when Phelps Dodge, when the mine closed, then you saw the spun off and the formation and of AIC, Ajo Improvement Company. And then Phelps Dodge sold the mine to Freeport. And that's where some of the complication begins. But this is also unique in that it's not only electric, it's gas, it's, I mean, it's water and it's sewer. And Ajo is a community that's made up of many seniors with low income. And they're going to be severely impacted by this, probably have to decide between paying their utilities and, or eating or getting their meds. And the offer on the table that is being made by AIC does not provide enough assist, low-income assistance in the view of many of the Ajo residents. And the Arizona Corporation, several commissioners have expressed their concern over what's happening. And of course, Pima County has a number of auxiliary facilities in Ajo. And the school district and our facilities are going to be negatively impacted. And all of this is going to be passed on to the consumers. So, who is going to be triply hit then? So, it's, it's unique.
It is, it is very. And who do they get their electric from?
Well, there's two, but I mean, AIC provides some electric and then the other one-
So, they actually have a generating station?
Yeah, yeah. And then APS, there are two electric providers, APS to part of the town and then AIC to another part of the town.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to get those questions clarified.
And no, that's, it's, it's a little bit of a maze.
Any more discussion? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously.
I want to thank my fellow board members. This will mean a lot to Ajo residents.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to call to the audience. We have a huge number of speaker cards that have been submitted today. So, what we're going to do is, we've got speaker cards from people who want to speak about general topics. We're going to hear those first in a regular call to the audience. Everybody who wants to speak about Stone Garden will speak at the Stone Garden item, which will be soon to follow. Okay? I'm going to allow speakers at that time. If you want to speak about Stone Garden and you get called in this first session, please tell me and we'll put your card in with the Stone Garden cards, okay? I'm asking everybody's cooperation with that. Also, we've had this meeting disturbed twice now by cellphones that have gone off. Please place your cellphone on silent or vibrate or whatever you have to do to make it so that it's not bugging other people. That would be very helpful to us. Again, since some of you were not in the room during call to the audience and during today's meeting, I'm asking everybody to please be respectful of each other. If you make any vulgar comments, you will be removed from the room. If you are yelling from your seat, you will be removed from the room. If you do anything else that the chair deems to be disrespectful or out of order, you will be removed from the room. So, I'm asking everybody to please be kind with each other and be patient with each other today. A number of you have signs and I see a flag out there in the audience as well, too. That's all good. Please be respectful of other people and make sure that your sign or your flag is not blocking other people's view of the dais. So, please keep it, you know, at a level so that you're being respectful to the people behind you. That's what I ask of every single person in the room. So, as we get started today, let's be thankful for each other's presence. Let's be respectful of each other and let's get this thing done as quickly as possible. Please be efficient in your comments. Try not to be repetitive, especially during the Stone Garden conversation, because I think we have 34 cards here just for Stone Garden alone. And we have about 22 for the regular call to the audience. Regular call to the audience will go on for an hour. If we extend past an hour, then those who do not get called will be called at the end of the board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, could I have to ask a question on that?
Yes.
How do you approach those folks who are here to address a specific item and they are then not allowed to do it because it's after an hour? How are they able to have an efficient way of addressing an item before they have, before the issue is adjudicated?
We're trying to be as efficient as we can here in this meeting. Everybody will have their three minutes to speak. That's all we're required to offer. And I think that's fair. And I think it's just a matter of us all being patient with each other and recognizing, just like we did in kindergarten, that everybody gets a turn. Very good. So, our first speaker is going to be Chris King. Mr. King, are you going to speak about Stone Garden or you want to speak in general terms?
General terms.
Thank you, sir. Please give us your name for the record and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors. If you would pull that microphone a little closer to you, that would be helpful, sir.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Good morning, supervisors. I'm Chris King. I'm a Pima County resident. More importantly, I'm a taxpayer. I'd like to take a second and wish Chris D. Simone a happy 10th anniversary with his Wake Up Tucson radio show. With a little bit of levity here as well. In 1972, a crack commando unit was sent to prison for, by a military court for a crime they didn't commit. These men promptly escaped from a maximum security stockade to the Los Angeles Underground. Today, still wanted by the government, they survive as soldiers of fortune. If you have a problem, if no one else can help, and if you can find them, maybe you can hire the A-Team. Some of them are still around. Now, onto a more serious note. I'd like to share with you some thoughts to ponder when you're alone. These are some excerpts from Are We Good Enough for Liberty by Lawrence Reed, president emeritus of the Foundation for Economic Education. You can blame a politician when he behaves that way, but don't forget the voters who put him in that spot. I see character deficits every time I see people pressuring the government to give them something at the expense of others. Something which they know in their very gut should have come instead from their own efforts and merit. I see it every time voters reward a corrupt office holder with praise and reelection, effectively bought and paid for with other people's money. They compromise their integrity and independence for a handout, a subsidy, or a special privilege. Within government, character is what differentiates a politician from a statesman. Statesmen don't seek public office for personal gain or attention. They often are people who take time out from productive careers to temporarily serve the public. They don't have to work for the government because that's all they know how to do. They stand for a principled vision, not for what they think citizens will fall for. When a statesman gets elected, he doesn't forget the public-spirited citizens who sent him to office. Becoming a mouthpiece for the permanent bureaucracy or some special interests that grease this campaign. Because they seek the truth, statesmen are more likely to do what's right than what may be politically popular at the moment. You know where they stand because they say what they mean and they mean what they say. They do not engage in class warfare, race-baiting, or other divisive or partisan tactics that pull people apart. They do not buy votes with tax dollars. They don't make promises they can't keep or intend to break. They take responsibility for their actions. A statesman doesn't try to pull himself up by dragging somebody else down. And he doesn't try to convince people they're victims just so he can posture as their savior. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is going to be Roger Skor.
I'm waiting for Stone Garden.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Skor. Tony Bruno is our next speaker. Tony, thank you for coming down here. We've got a lot of people here supporting the Amato Youth Center. Glad to see that. Why don't you all stand up so we can all see how many people made it all the way up here from Amato to do that? Very proud of you all. Thank you all for coming. Tony, name for the record and you have three minutes to address the board.
You got it, sir. Good morning to you all. Thank you, Chair Elias and the board for allowing us time to speak today. I'm kind of leading us off and I wanted to give you a little history before anything else. I'm Tony Bruno. I'm a lifelong resident of the Amato community, community activist, sometimes considered an instigator.
Yes.
Yes.
And so, I work for Project Pep and we operate the Amato Youth Center in Amato. On the evening of September 2nd, a microburst hit the Amato area. We had approximately, depending who you listen to, five to eight inches of water come down in about 20 minutes. That water came through the business areas in Amato. We had approximately three foot of water in our youth center. It pretty much wiped out our teen center. It took out our younger youth center. And we are now operating out of three churches, a fire station, and multiple other sites to keep 124 youth occupied after school. That's how many we have enrolled in our program. We operate a small nine-passenger bus to move those youth back and forth. Our service area is approximately 850 square miles of rural Arizona. Service area is from the town of Saguaro down to Rio Rico, out to Aravaca, and up into the Hailvi Shakeria. We see youth from Continental School District. We see youth from the Saguaro School District, as well as the Santa Cruz Valley School District. We appreciate the fact that Pima County, Mr. Huckleberry, and others are working with us to find a new place at K-Supi Park, and that is ongoing. I will tell you, currently, my office, although I have one that I use in a church, for the most part operates out of my truck. Keeping youth out of trouble, away from substances, illicit substances, and substance misuse is key to what we do. And so, I just wanted to provide a little history as to where we're at. Others will fill you into what happens next. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is going to be Amy Bass. Thank you for coming, Amy. Please, your name for the record in three minutes.
Amy Bass, thank you very much, Chair Elias and the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to speak this morning. As Tony mentioned, with the recent flood we had, we lost our building. But I want to say that Pep, the organization behind the Amato Youth Center, has been a diligent steward of this operation for the past three years. Prior to that, my role as the Director of the Pima County Community Prevention Coalition, which is a substance abuse prevention coalition here. We started working in the Amato area, thanks to Pastor Mauricio, 12 years ago. And we are one of the very few services that are there, providing after-school programming and life skills, career development, academic support, and social skills to the kids, because we all want kids to have social skills, right? Keeps them out of trouble, makes them good stewards of the community. We have an amazing community down in Amato. They love the kids. Our kids are at risk for a number of reasons. And it's beautiful to see the community support, people who don't have to step out of their way to support the kids, and they have. So, they see the value of the human life and the development of these teens. We're blessed to be working with them. As Tony mentioned, he's had some support, office space. Laura Lee was not here, able to be here with us today. She is a great advocate for the kids, really helping them develop their self-esteem and self-worth, which is detrimental when it's lacking in a teen, and we know that. So, we're just very grateful. The Pima County Board of Supervisors, the Community Development Block Grant has supported our teen program. We have seen some great successes. Pastor Mauricio can tell you testimonies about kids who have quit using drugs because of this program. So, we'd like to thank you and we hope that we have the continued support of the Board of Supervisors and the Pima County Community Development Block Grant and the other programs you have funded. Laura Lee sent a little picture. Thank you, Pima County Board of Supervisors with love from the Amato Youth. And you'll see the kids and Dr. Arnold all giving the "I love you" sign. So, that's all we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Our next speaker is going to be Linda Martinez.
She's decided not to speak.
Very well. Thank you very much, Linda. We appreciate that. Kathleen Wischnik. Ms. Wischnik, thank you for being here. Appreciate you and your patience as well. Please give us your name for the record and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Good morning. My name is Kathleen Wischnik and I reside in Aravaca. I've been associated with the Amato Youth Group for at least six years. The big thing that we do besides helping to keep kids drug-free and show them a new way of life is that we have a wonderful chili cook-off in November, which is our major fundraiser for the youth. It helps to support the after-school programs, the career planning, and other activities for the youth to learn a new way of life and to be able to be a productive citizen for the rest of their life. I highly support the youth center. I'm not on their board, but I'm an active community member to help the children of Amato, Aravaca, and San Cruz County, that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is going to be Damian Kennedy. Damian Kennedy. Damon Kennedy? Amato Youth Center?
I think you left.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Our next speaker is going to be Marco Vehar. Marco, are you here? Again, that's the Amato Youth Center. Okay. Our next speaker is going to be Hazel Lopez. Hazel Lopez and Murray Pier. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you guys being here. Please give us your name for the record and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Murray Pier.
Oh, Murray Pier, right? I got that one.
Right. And basically, we're here to thank the Board of Supervisors for their support of adult education.
Oh, thank you.
Due to some, to a series of unfortunate events, I wasn't able to graduate or go on to college 55 years ago. But now I was able to do that because of your support. And in 2015, I got my GED and- And this year, I'll graduate from Pima Community College.
That's great. That's great. Congratulations.
My name is Garcia Lopez.
Garcia, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I am an adult education alumni and an ambassador for adult education. I would like to thank you for your support, as this is very important to our community. Through adult education, I have been able to further my academic goals through college and still represent adult education by serving in the Pima College Student Senate. I would just like to defeat the stigma that getting your GED is a cheap tactic to alternative high school, because in reality, it's a second chance, as not many of us have had that opportunity. And just like Murray Peer, I have also endured some hardships in life that have prevented me from going back to high school. And upon receiving my GED, I have found a whole new outlook on life, and it's given me a much better perspective on everything. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. I know we have a group of people here from adult education. Maybe you could all stand up so we could see you all. There we go. Thank you so much for coming. When my mom went back to work, I was in sixth grade, and she went to work for adult education over at Monzo School as a teacher's assistant in the ESL program. We met a lot of wonderful students there, so I always have a warm spot in my heart for adult education. I had to say that, sorry. Gratuitous plug for adult education. No, there you are. Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. I thought you might have been getting up to leave. Please give us your name for the record. Thank you for being here, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Reverend Matthew Funk Crary. I serve Borderlands Unitarian Universalists in Amato, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Amato Youth Center and to thank you all for your ongoing support. My congregation serves much of southern Arizona. We have members from Tucson, Sarita. We have members from Rio Rico. We've had members from Nogales, Aravaca, and of course, Amato. But I live here in Tucson, Midtown, not far from where I grew up. And so every day, except Sundays, I pass through that slowdown area there on Swan, headed towards Golf Links, so I can head out of town by Bonias. And I'm always struck that there's a few people, of course, who think that they can get where they're going without the rest of us. Bless their hearts. But the rest of us, we slow down, and we make safe space for that place that we designated for our children. And that's what the Amato Youth Center does in my community down south. It makes safe space for our children. Last month, I was at a conference, and the psychologist, child psychologist, Dr. Bob Ditter, spoke about Generation Z. I had no idea what that was. I'm not sure if you all do. The Generation Z are our children from eight to 22, and it turns out all five of my sons are right in that range. That's today's youth. That's tomorrow's youth. And they are at risk. They're at risk, and we can see that in the evidence of the suicide rates that are increasing. We can see that, and we know that, when they're turning to substance abuse and untold numbers. And so a place like the Amato Youth Center and the programming that they do, it's essential. It's a place where adults, and you've met some of them already today, adults who have a great deal of integrity, who are making deep connections with children and youth, are showing them that there's a totally different way to live and bringing them hope and focus because they're willing just to take the time to slow down and make that safe space. So that's what you've done, and I know that's what you will continue to do in your support of the Amato Youth Center. So I just wanted to take the time to thank you for being those people who slow down, who know that we're all going to get someplace because we're going there together. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Our next speaker's going to be Brenda Wexler. Brenda, did you want to speak about Stone Garden, or you want to speak to this?
Yeah.
That's okay. We got you covered. I kind of had a feeling inside me that that was going to come out.
That's all I am to talk about.
[laughing] Our next speaker's, our next speaker's going to be Barbara Crummett?
Yeah.
Am I close?
Yes, very close.
Oh, good. Thank you. Please come forward and give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Good morning to each of you. I have a handout. Okay. So, two weeks ago from today...
Your name, please.
Barbara Crummett. I thought everybody heard.
That's okay. No problem.
Two weeks from today will mark the first anniversary of a pack dog named Lovely, a petite Chihuahua mix that endured prolonged suffering unto death from delayed medical care services while residing in our county shelter. This is what the medical record revealed, and yet you may have heard a different story. One where facts were subjected to a spin, one where the focus was aimed at blaming the caregiver rather than the denial of medical services, one that failed to report the ongoing medical neglect, and one crafted to seek $15,000 in donations from the public. No matter how you spin a story, spinning is designed to deceive, and it is wrong. Add to this the purpose of seeking money raises the question of fraudulent behavior. We have been subject to spin stories in many related areas of PAC. Dog bites and PAC's failure to cite owners for aggressive dogs, aggressive dogs released in the community, sick animals also released into the community, a failure of PAC to honor both the codes for the city of Tucson and Pima County, contemptuous responses to public concerns, misleading and fact-avoiding annual reports, and a safety report from our county PAC leadership, and PAC policies regarding how they define certain things, such as an open-door shelter. In the case of Lovely, spinning the truth to market such a tragedy as a palatable fairy tale of heroism raised further questions about ethical practices. Has our community animal shelter become one ethically indigent organization? Pima County residents expect our elected and appointed county officials to demand that PAC leadership provide truth, absence of spin. Something for you to ponder is that just as no smoking is in this building does not mean 10% of the folks in this room can light up, so neither does 10% kill rate mean no-kill success in the world of animal welfare. Continuing to support such language as no-kill and save rates is in itself a deceitful practice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker's going to be Dana Cormash. Dana, are you here?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for being here. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
So...
Give us your name, please, for the record.
Dana Cormash. In the eyes of God, so this has to do with the ban on wildlife killing for sport. In the eyes of God, is my life more important than a coyote's? No. I had to quit being the Sunday school teacher at my church because I cannot tell kids that we are. God is mad at what we are doing to the environment and to wildlife. And, Richard, I think you've read this book. God is mad and sad at the same time. That's all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Our next, our next speaker's going to be Roberto Rodriguez. Dr. Rodriguez, thank you for being here today. Please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Yes, Roberto Rodriguez, professor at the University of Arizona. And I know that people here are for Stone Garden primarily, but I had something that's related. That's why I'm not part of that...
That's fine.
...that session. You know, several weeks ago, several students were arrested on our campus, and they're students of mine, former students of mine. And one thing that was kind of odd is that we've seen then and now a whole series of law enforcement officers on campus. You know, you would expect one law enforcement agency, but there has been, again, a series of them. One of the students involved told me that she saw an officer just this past week wearing all green with the words "police" on the uniform. We've seen officers wearing tan and green pants, armed. And then during one of the protests regarding these students, there was a sheriff's department vehicle with two big professional cameras. It just struck us as odd that, I mean, we don't know what the policy is, and part of it has to do with safety issue. Because for obvious reasons, especially at nighttime, as an example, if somebody tells a young woman or anyone, any student, like, "Pull over," or X or Y, you would think logically, you know, you would be able to easily identify who is being, who is being, rather, who's doing the talking, so to speak. Who's pulling, because they're not always being pulled over because they walk. In any case, so I didn't know if, I spoke to sheriff, I don't know if he's still here, the sheriff...
He's back there.
Yeah, regarding this. Because I think that the campus needs a clear policy, and because I believe the sheriffs are related to yourselves, the county, that there has to be a clear policy as to who gets to patrol the campus. I spoke to the chief of police at U of A, and he said that any law enforcement officer is entitled or permitted to carry weapons on campus. I asked him why. He says that because they're on duty 24/7, meaning they're entitled to arrest anybody if they wish. And I asked if that also related to the immigration, you know, ICE, et cetera? And he says, yes. And therefore, the conflict. Anyway, so in terms of yourselves, and again, I'll send the question directly to the sheriff.
Please do.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what that policy is. You know, who can patrol? How's the time? Well, it's already time?
No, you've got 12 more seconds.
Oh, okay. Anyway, so I want to do that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that, Dr. Rodriguez.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, very good. Okay. Our next speaker's going to be Jerry Otoboni. Thank you for being here, Ms. Otoboni. If you could please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Good morning, Chairman Elias and Board of Supervisor. My name is Jerry Otoboni, and I live in Orel Valley. Well, I heard the mayor of Tucson, Rothschild, on the radio. Since Tucson is an immigrant-friendly city, he's asking people to house some of the people coming across the border. He apparently isn't doing it. He wants others to do it. Well, Mr. Huckleberry, you have a nice, large home, so perhaps you should house them and provide tents on your lawn. Along with Supervisor Elias and Bronson and perhaps Vala Des. After all, you promoted the immigration-friendly idea. Also, we have two undocumented people on a commission who went to a high school, today, I guess, I heard it on the radio, to get students to leave school where they're supposed to be educated, to march for an undocumented student who was pulled over by the police, no driver's license, no insurance, outdated license on the car. I think that might be illegal. I'm not sure. I think it's illegal. My Hispanic and multicultural grandson, he's also part Blackfoot, where he drives, when he drives, will have a legal license, insurance, and plates. The police did not take the undocumented youth to jail, but called his parents. Why are two undocumented individuals on a commission representing Americans? These two on the commission who don't want babies in the car to receive seat belts, somebody's going to be trying to give them seat belts, apparently, they would rather, they apparently don't like babies, they would rather have the babies go flying through the windshields. This is despicable and disgusting. Thank you.
Next speaker's going to be Mia Title. Thank you for being here. Appreciate your presence. And if you could please give us your name for the record.
Hi.
And you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Nice to see all of you. I'm sorry you can't respond to what I'm going to say, but it's, you know how it works. You send memo, we talk to you, you send memos. Supervisor Miller, we had all these people bussed in from the nursing home to the transportation advisory meeting. I mean, did these people even have their mental faculties, or were they just like props?
Wow.
Um...
Please do not call out from your seat, Mr. King. I saw you. Stop. Right now.
The residents who commented on this at the meeting, gave feedback, they were so selfish. They only cared about the streets and their own neighborhoods, right? And we've heard from them before. So, and only a few of these residents had anything valuable to say. Isn't that right, Mr. Huckleberry? That was, isn't that what you said in your memo? Okay, you didn't exactly use words, those words, but it's pretty easy to read between the lines. You chose to single out a community by name and imply that their presence inconveniences people. And this was in your memo to the board. And I know you can't answer, but you made it clear that these seniors contributed to an unfortunate situation for the staff by singling them out. You singled out the community by name, and maybe, I know that wasn't, maybe that wasn't your intention, because that was directed at Supervisor Miller for orchestrating it because orchestrate, nursing home people need to be orchestrated, right? But you should know that the activity director at the fountains told me that Supervisor Miller actually had nothing to do with orchestrating that or bussing those people in. It was orchestrated by a resident of their community, which, by the way, was not actually the fountain's assisted living community, it was the fountain's independent living community. So those people who attended, even though they were old, they still had their mental faculties, and they chose to be there without being orchestrated in by anybody. Whether they were bussed in, car pulled in, drove in, it's not worth mentioning because they had a right to be there. And maybe that was just kind of like, not, maybe that was not your point, it was just to clarify that you wanted Supervisor Miller to do things differently. But I'm here because I think it's important to clarify that these people shouldn't have been singled out. I came into these meetings a long time ago about the roads leaning on the Democratic side of things. So I'm not saying this because I'm a Republican or because I like Supervisor Miller, but your disapproval of her is affecting all of us in District 1, and I've been saying that for a long time now. So...
I'm going to ask you to conclude your comments, please. Your time has expired.
Okay. So, stop giving us this "let them eat cake" attitude. Go take these old people some flowers, and stop picking on Supervisor Miller.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker's going to be Jay Salvatierra. Mr. Salvatierra, please. We're trying to get through this thing quickly. I have five more cards, and an hour will be in 10 minutes. So if you could please move along and get things going, it would help us very much. If you could make your comments brief, that also helps us tremendously. Please, sir, your name for the record, and thank you for being here.
Jonathan Salvatierra, resident of Tucson, real estate broker and railroad retiree. I'm here to speak about pseudoscience over objectivity. And in the first instance, how it relates to Rosemont Mine and the myopic view of the permitting and the overall genuine science in determining whether there's a risk or not. and the overall genuine science in determining whether there's a risk or not. When getting some renewal hours for my certification, I had the good fortune to take a geology class from Gary Hicks. And he highlighted the fact that the Carlsbad Caverns, Carchners Caverns are linked together. Carchners Caverns run west into our valley and into our watershed and our basin. And who knows, we may be, the benefits, have the benefits of having another cavern in our metropolitan area, in the mountains. This has not been found yet, they've not gone further. But suffice to say, there is this incredible underground river that provides us water to our whole metropolitan area and has for millions of years. This is, this is a geology. It's not, I haven't seen it in, you know, Corps of Engineers report or, you know, I know they have their faults, but this reinterpretation of a previous, you know, guideline to submit a permit under different circumstances that narrows the qualification of data is very disingenuous. No long-term cost-benefit analysis will clean up Rosemont. If you've been out to Green Valley and you've seen the tailing pond behind there, or you've ever found a case where you see the winds, our prevailing winds blow from southwest to northeast, that's what's going to happen for us. That's us. That's us. If you approve Rosemont Mine and the, it's been characterized as wet sand, but wet sand doesn't melt double-sol vibram toe shoes. We've trucked 20 acid, sulfuric acid cars up to service the mines. Where does it go? Does it go down into our perched and our regional and our watershed water? Is it going to pollute our pecan groves, you know, even more? And here, our own water? We have 80% of our water needs today are met by CAP water. And now that's in tremendous turmoil and conflict. Why should we allow another individual to pull so much water out of our watershed for zip? I-
Mr. Salvatierra, I'm going to ask you to finish your comments. You've expended your three minutes.
New Arizona subdivisions can no longer guarantee 100-year water supply. We also do not identify glyphosate, PFOS, PFAS, as blended water that both City of Tucson and Morana now share the benefits of or the detriment of. So, I appreciate your concern.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Our next speaker's going to be Martha Michaels. She said she wanted to use the-
Martha Michaels with assistance by Linda Leadberg today. I am a resident, or we are residents, of a District 1 neighborhood whose county-owned failed roads have not been properly maintained in over 30 years. I have attended many of the Transportation Advisory Committee TAC meetings. I have a mixed reaction to the Department of Transportation's recommended road repair plan named Scenario 6 that was approved at the most recent April 23rd TAC meeting. It is very positive that the recommendations include a distribution of 50% of next year's road repair funds going to repair failed local roads in every district. However, it is concerning that all of next year's road repair funds are recommended to be equally distributed by Board of Supervisor District. Please allow me to illustrate these concerns. Here's a simple pie chart split into five equal pieces. Each of these pieces is 20% of the pie. If I were to serve you five members of the board an apple pie, this would be a fair way to slice and serve the pie. The second pie chart shows the percentages of local roads in each of Pima County's five districts. There is a total of 1,236 miles of local roads listed in the Scenario 6 recommended plan. The second pie chart shows the percentages of each of the five districts' local roads. By far, the highest number of local mile, local road miles, 456, is found in District 1. Even though the number of miles of local roads is very different from district to district, each district is recommended to get exactly the same funding for 5 and 1/4 miles of mill and pave. Equal is not the same as equitable. District 1 has 37% of the local roads, but is recommended to get 20% of the funds. This may be equal funding, but it's not equitable. An equitable distribution of funds would assign dollars based on need. Equitable means fair. Road repair is a serious safety issue. Now and from now on, decisions about the distribution of road repair funding should be made with a non-political and equitable approach to ensure all Pima County resident's safety. Voltaire first and later Spiderman's Uncle Ben famously said, "With great power comes great responsibility." Please use your powers of the budget to ensure that road repair dollars are distributed in an equitable fashion. Government fairness encourages public trust. Thank you. And please pave, please pave Sabino Town and Country Estates.
Next speaker's going to be Robert Royce. Robert, thank you for bringing the roses today. They're a nice addition to the dais. Please come forward, give us your name for the record. And you have three minutes to address the board of supervisors.
I appreciate the chance to speak this morning. My name's Robert Royce. I've got a pretty little story about Guatemala that I'm pretty sure nobody in this room or hardly anyone has ever heard before. In 1944, all of the stars lined up for Guatemala. The Goliath of the North was engaged in World War II and totally distracted, and that Goliath had an official, was 12 years into its official good neighbor policy. Lazaro Cardenas was Defense Minister of Mexico, and Jorge Ubico, Guatemala's longtime supposed benevolent dictator, had too many German friends. So when the young colonels in the Guatemalan Army decided it was time to get rid of Ubico and found a democracy, they first asked the appropriate authorities in the US State Department what the reaction would be. And the message came back, "Go ahead, just remember the elections." So that's exactly what happened. Ubico, without spilling one single drop of blood, Ubico was put on a plane for Spain. Elections were called, and the people of Guatemala elected a new president. They elected a Harvard-educated Jeffersonian from Argentina to be their new president. Well, without a single drop of blood, Argentine, I mean, Guatemala had a real functioning democracy with all the blessings of a Jeffersonian democracy, peace, liberty, safety, and prosperity, and all of the blessings of a Cardenista democracy, education, health care, and exploitation of the country's natural resources for the people. The people thrived, the country thrived. I talk about safety? Nine years of the Guatemalan Revolution, six people died of political violence. Six people died of political violence. Probably the most peaceful revolution in the history of the country, of the world. Indeed, I mean, it was just totally peaceful. The indigenous people were included in the economy and the social fabric of the country. Probably the most successful revolution in the history of the world. And so I ask the question, is this the true nature of the Guatemalan people? Six deaths in nine years of political violence? And what happened to the Guatemalan Revolution? Well, it was killed. The fate of Guatemala was decided in the 1952 American presidential elections when the general defeated the statesman. And I will continue my story, not quite as pretty as the one today next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Royce. Pat Malkow, Malkow? Pardon me? Okay, Stone Garden pile there. Paul Parisi?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Paul Parisi. I'm here representing Fort Tucson. We're a nonprofit organization that seeks biblical solutions. You know, when I look in the Bible, I don't see anywhere where it mandates government to fix potholes, so you're off the hook there. But, but the most important thing that government does is protect God's people. And I'm proud that this month, every month, we have a breakfast at Fort Tucson. And this month, I've invited Mark Napier to be our speaker, the Pima County Sheriff. And I know you all support him greatly, and I want to invite every one of you to be my personal guest to come to the breakfast. I'd like to share a little story about Mark. My brother-in-law was a Tucson police officer serving on the same team at the Tucson Police Department as Mark. And years ago, my brother-in-law got in a severe motorcycle accident and broke his leg and didn't know he was ever going to be able to be a police officer again. Well, being a team member, Mark, every day, would stop by my brother-in-law's house, who was in great depression, and Mark just really ministered to him until he recovered physically and mentally. And happy to say, my brother-in-law did come back to the police department and ended up being a captain with Mark on the police department. You know, we all work on teams together, and Mark is on your team. And I hope you come to the breakfast on May 24th and as my guest. And also, the general public is also invited to come. Just, you could register on the Fort Tucson website or Fort Tucson government domain or the Fort Tucson Facebook page itself. So I thank you, and I thank you for your support of public safety. And I'd like to see you at our breakfast on May 24th. Thank you.
Next speaker's going to be Maximiliano Torres. Max, did you want to speak about Stone Garden? Or did you want to speak about something in general?
Something in general.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Please give us your name for the record. And you have three minutes to address the board. And I enjoyed playing softball with you a million years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank all of the members of the board and all your staff for the good work that you do. And, you know, being a public servant is always, is not always the most popular individuals in this community. But from my perspective, being a public servant is one of the most noble causes we can take on because the goal of a public servant is to make everybody's life better. So, just want to congratulate you and thank you for the good work that you do.
Thank you.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I have to admit that I was a little dismayed at the tenor of some of the commentary that I've heard, especially when it comes to immigrants. The correct term for these people are, is unauthorized entrance, not illegal aliens. Even the Supreme Court, when they made their decision on SB 1070, this was a conservative court led by Chief Justice Stevens, he refused to use the term illegal alien in their findings and in their ruling. And I think that we can all take a lesson from that and try to kind of calm down the tenor and the commentary and recognize that we're all human beings. The Bible doesn't give preference over anyone. The Bible treats us all equally. The Constitution says the same thing. And I think that we should adhere to those truths and take advantage of that and recognize that there's a lot to be learned from treating people equally and having some compassion and caring for all of us. That's what made this country great. Everyone that has come to this country, starting from the very beginning, came here to make a better life. That makes us all equals. And I think that it's important that we all start taking that into consideration. I want to touch briefly and give an example of some of the horrors that some of these people go through. In 1976, three people, three unauthorized entrants, crossed into the United States in Douglas, Arizona, were apprehended by three ranchers, white ranchers. They were tied and bound. Their clothes were cut off from them with hunting knives. They cut their hair with hunting knives. They threatened them with castration. Then they started a little fire to have a little bit more fun and put a rebar in there. Once that rebar was red hot, they burned the soles of their feet with that rebar. After they were done with that, they cut them loose one at a time, took them into a wash, turned them loose facing towards Mexico. And as they were running away, they shot them with a birdshot. One of those young men had 272 pellets on the backside of his body from birdshot. And they did that with each one of them. Can you imagine the horror of the other two who heard that shotgun go off once he went into the wash and didn't return? They probably thought they were going to get killed, and they thought his friend, their friend had been killed. After an investigation, and the three men who were called, who were named the Hannigans, were charged by the county attorney for 21 counts each of violations of the law. And all white jury let them all go. It took us two years through the federal government to get the prosecutor again and correct it.
You've expended all your time.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. But let's see if we can change the tenor of this. And thank you for all the good work that you do.
Thank you, Max. Next speaker's going to be Gail Camaras. Stone Garden, okay? And then last speaker will be Christopher Cole.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Christopher Cole, and I'm chair of the Pima County Libertarian Party. I-11. The people of Avro Valley don't want it. Environmentalists don't want it because of the unnecessary destruction to the desert and habitat. The voters of Pima County rejected using bond money for it. Pima County Board of Supervisors, Resolution 2007 343. You don't want it. So where does Mr. Huckleberry get the authority to spend county money, use county employees to advance I-11? Where? Now, I realize this is, has to be a rhetorical question because you cannot respond. But it is something that you need to consider. Is Mr. Huckleberry being insubordinate? Does he believe that he's above your authority? I don't know. I'm not going to go into that. But where does he get the authority to keep pushing I-11? Apparently, as far as I can determine, you haven't given it to him. But it is something that you need to consider and probably take action on. And Mr. Christie, the Pima County Libertarian Party agrees with you. Call to the public should be completed before any of the items come up because somebody in the public could say something critical and something that could change somebody's determination on an issue. In October of 1964, my father taught me. It took me a long time to understand the wisdom of this. Unless you honestly look at both sides of an issue, you don't have an opinion. You're a parrot. And the Pima County Board of Supervisors needs to listen to all sides of an issue before making a decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, fortunately, we were able to get through all our cards. We did it a little more than an hour, so I appreciate everybody being brief and being quick about it. We're going to take a short break, and we'll be back, and we'll get back to business again. We're going to take a short break, and we'll be back, and we'll get back to business again.
For a second.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
I just wanted to comment on this because as I was reviewing the whole statute, there were a lot of things that kind of raised a red flag for me that could be interpreted. But it was only this one item which states participate in, organize, promote, or solicit participation in a contest where a participant uses or intends to use any device or implement to capture or kill predatory animals or fur-bearing animals. And those types of animals are defined in the statute as being coyotes, you know, all of the animals that are not like deer hunting, that kind of thing. So it would not include those because I was kind of concerned because in deer hunting, there are contests, there are prizes. But these are for things like coyotes. And last year, the year before, we voted to ban-
It was two years ago.
Two years ago, the coyote hunts, which I believe it was a unanimous vote at the time. The fur-bearing animals are musk rats, raccoons, otters, weasels, bobcats, beavers, badgers, and ringtail cats, and predatory are foxes, skunks, coyotes, and bobcats. So because it is only that one section and it specifically states that the contest is where the participants are registering and recording an entry and paying a fee and getting prizes in cash, and it's these animals specifically. I just wanted to clarify that because if you read the whole statute, it gets very confusing. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? If not, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're going to go on to the Stone Garden items which are buried in the consent calendar. Items sixteen and seventeen.
Mr. Chairman.
We have forty speakers that have signed up to speak to this item. I'm going to go ahead and hear from those speakers first, Supervisor Christie.
Just a question, are we going to take them individually as a board or altogether? Or?
I think we can consider them together during the discussion, but we'll vote on them individually as items. Okay? Everybody in agreement with that? Very well. Our first speaker is going to be Steve Diamond. Mr. Diamond, if you please come forward and give us your name for the record. You have three minutes again before we start the timer.
It's already started.
Oh, good. Well, wait a second. Just asking for everybody to please be considerate. No yelling out from the audience, no being vulgar. And if you do anything that the chair deems to be out of order, you're going to be asked to leave the room. And this will be enforced as strictly as I can today. So, Mr. Diamond, with that, thank you for your presence and appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Diamond. Although some of you have changed positions on Stone Garden recently, I have not. I'm against it under any circumstances. No matter how much lipstick you put on it, it's still a pig. No matter how much you talk about fiscal responsibility and conserving county funds, these federal funds come with too much baggage. You can accomplish the same ends and accomplish them better with county funds. You know it, and I know it. And no matter how much you hope to bind Sheriff Napier with ironclad conditions, you can't. He has a clear history of doing everything he can to thwart your oversight and keep you from doing the job that you're elected to do. You may as well try to bind him with magic as with conditions. It isn't going to work. You know it, I know it, and he knows it. Why do you think he's unbothered by all this fuss? I'm no magician, but I can read the runes. It doesn't take a magician to see where this is headed. If I could cast magic, I'd use it to reawaken your sense of morality, your sense of principle, and your courage in the face of a system that eats your soul in small bites. Alas, I can't. What's left for me to say is that if you're truly determined to accept this grant with conditions, if that's really the only option that's going to get by this board, then you had better make them the best conditions this planet has ever seen. Last year's conditions weren't even strong enough to stop Sheriff Napier from spending Stone Garden money you thought you had stopped him from spending. You have to do better. Last year's conditions gave us new fine-sounding policies for PCSD, but the sheriff's lack of transparency means that none of us has any idea whether or not they're being followed, except that the data we do have strongly suggests that they aren't. You have to do better. To help you get to that point, I've submitted suggestions for sixteen conditions that would help to mitigate some of the harmful effects of Stone Garden and of how it's administered in Pima County. You had my memo yesterday by email, and you have it in front of you. I hope you use it. But make no mistake, there's no mitigating this pile of rubbish. There's no justifying the unjustifiable. There's no accepting the unacceptable. No matter how good the conditions, I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Our next speaker is going to be Allison Jones. Ms. Jones, if you'd please come forward, give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Supervisor Elias. My name is Allison Jones. Thank you for hearing me today. I am Chair of the Pima County Democratic Party. Last year, the Pima County Democratic Party passed a resolution in support of your decision to reject Stone Garden grant funding. I'm here today to state that our resolve has not waned. Pretextual stops are still occurring, and border communities have become militarized zones. Pretextual stops are based on racism, and they are unacceptable to us. Our values are not for sale. We understand that well-intentioned supervisors might have a hard time voting to decline these funds. Let me assure you, declining Stone Garden funds will not be a pirate victory. However, accepting them could be an epic and resounding defeat of our values and everything we hold dear. Only if there is a way to completely eliminate racism from this process would we even begin to consider conditions on accepting such funds. Be fearless, be principled, vote no on accepting Stone Garden grant funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Allison. Our next speaker is going to be Luis Okendo. Luis, are you here?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Please come forward, give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Hello, my name is Luis Okendo. I'm a citizen of Pima County and a member of Supervisor Bronson's district. We must ask, what's the true cost of the Stone Garden grant? The question before us is whether we want to vote for force and paranoia or to vote for solidarity and empathy. So, what is the cost? Well, last year we rejected the contract, and yet we are still here, alive and well. But the cost of accepting the contract would place further strain on our sheriff's department, and we would be considering massive, unaccountable harvesting of the geodata of all denizens of our county because of the license plate program. Going forward, we don't know where the political winds will blow, yet we are here today, we can act today. And as tensions continue to mount, will we be resilient enough in the future to reject the funding if we cannot do so now? Furthermore, we must remember that appeasement is never reinforced electorally or otherwise. I urge the board to vote for our county, and I urge the board to vote to oppose the Stone Garden funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is going to be Ryan Kelly. Mr. Kelly, if you'd please come forward. And you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors. And thank you very much for your presence and your patience here is always appreciated, sir.
Thank you. Ryan Kelly and I live in District One. So we're here today yet again to ask, to demand, that our supervisors say no to Operation Stone Garden in our county, that decisions made from this dais not be dictated by the politics of fear. Any perceived political expediency on the part of members of the Board of Supervisors in considering acceptance of Operation Stone Garden funds, now that we're nearing an election year, would both be a gross misinterpretation of the truth and an unveiling of the limits of their moral principles in governing. Collaborative law enforcement operations between our local sheriffs and federal immigration agencies are oppressive and harmful to the most vulnerable in our community. Three of you acknowledged that very statement yourselves in this very room some months ago. It has been made crystal clear that the Department of Homeland Security-funded grant programs like Operation Stone Garden separate families too. Let's think on that a moment. I recall the press conference organized by the elected representatives of this city and county that took place right outside in the lobby, beneath the American and Mexican flags hanging side by side. We were all consumed with the notion, having to witness the new images every day on TV of children being ripped from the arms of their parents. We were outraged. You were outraged. I distinctly recall Supervisor Bronson at a loss for words and in a moment of what I saw as passionate honesty when asked what could be done. She called for acts of civil disobedience. The collective amnesia that seems to have occurred amongst the decision-makers of our county on this issue, family separation, because that's what this is, is both disheartening and disappointing. But this community has not forgotten. They live it. Yesterday, more than a hundred Desert View students walked out in support of their classmate, who was stopped by a Pima County sheriff's deputy and handed over to Border Patrol. For twelve years, each other has been all we've had. Rapid response teams formed to provide observers at stops involving immigration agencies. And there are too many GoFundMe accounts to raise bail and pay for legal fees for our community to even keep track of. Of members taken, members of our community taken, taken by unjust, fear-mongering, migrant-trolling policies and programs like Operation Stone Garden. Stone Garden by its very nature functions as a field laboratory stretching the truth, stretching the meaning of, quote, "reasonable suspicion" and, quote, "probable cause." Let's just quote directly from the DHS list of Stone Garden agency responsibilities, and I quote, "Specific responsibilities: One, saturation patrols of known communities where high levels of criminal activities occur due to illicit acts by undocumented aliens. Two, patrol interdiction operations consisting of reasonable suspicion stops of potential undocumented aliens. Three, coordination of resources and intelligence between participants and US Border Patrol." I think my shirt makes that statement clear. This cannot be reconciled, this cannot be justified. We still say no, no to Operation Stone Garden now and forever in this county.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to those guys working on the ceiling over there. I appreciate it, and your patience as the audience is greatly appreciated as well. But we want to keep things going so that we can be as efficient as we can in this circumstance, but thank you. John Denker is our next speaker. Mr. Denker, if you'd please come forward, give us your name for the record. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors. He's got it, don't worry.
Yes, John Denker, born and raised here. Stone Garden is two things. If you're a fish, sometimes you see cheese in the water, sometimes you see a hook in the water, and sometimes you see both or neither.
It's coming on right now. Oh, it's up.
That, this has really poisoned the discussion because people are calling two things by the same names. And says, "Oh, we need the cheese, watch out for the hook." But we need the cheese, watch out for the hook. It would be great, you know, a very clever fish can steal the cheese without getting hooked. And that is maybe, maybe possible with Stone Garden. I don't know that it's possible, I don't know that it's not. That, but if this is going to be accepted with conditions, the conditions have to be very careful. I've heard members of the board say that Stone Garden is a good thing because we're going to take some of the money and use it for humanitarian relief. That's wrong. It's mathematically wrong as well as morally wrong. If you take the discretionary, the indirect costs, that's normally go to pensions. If you move that over to humanitarian work, you've not got an unfunded pension liability. All you've done is relabel it. You can pay pension out of general fund and humanitarian out of the grant, or vice versa. It doesn't make any difference. Relabeling it is just a cheap political trick. It creates a talking point. It's dishonest, it's deceptive, and we're tired of being lied to, we're tired of being deceived. And this is an example of where conditions can go wrong. The last year, the conditions went terribly wrong. Everybody's not happy with that. So, and as several other speakers have mentioned, it's very, very hard to impose conditions on the sheriff. I know there's some people here who are predisposed to unconditional acceptance. Some people are predisposed to accepting with conditions. Some people are predisposed to outright rejection. That might be the right thing, it might not. A very clever fish can steal the cheese without getting hooked, but there's a deadly hook there, you have to be very careful. So if there's going to be conditions, it may possibly be a little hook. I think I know how to do that, maybe. I can't guarantee it's possible, can't guarantee that it's not. So if there's going to be conditions, it has to start with an absolute ironclad embargo. Nobody can spend, or obligate, or touch the money until this board enacts other conditions. Because the conditions need to be very carefully engineered, they need to be reviewed by Klepsy, they need to be reviewed by the general public. Nobody has done the homework to do that properly. So rather than any particular set of clever conditions, it needs to be absolute embargo. Otherwise, it should be rejected outright.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is going to be Jenny Simner. Jenny, thank you for being here again. You know the routine. Give your name and three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Supervisors. I'm Jenny Lee Simner, and I've been thinking lately about my own family. My grandfather came to America, like so many, looking for work and fleeing discrimination against Russian Jews. He spoke with a thick Russian accent that I always did struggle to understand. My great-grandmother fled violent pogroms in Poland, where she'd had to smuggle cigarettes across the border to feed her family. She reached America just months before new quotas against Eastern European Jews would have made her undocumented. My grandmother arrived as a toddler. She didn't even realize she wasn't a US citizen for many years. But when she did, she applied for and was granted citizenship without much fuss. How different their lives would be if they lived in America and Pima County today. My grandmother would, if she was lucky, be dubbed a dreamer and given an uncertain status that could be taken away on a whim. My great-grandfather would worry that a routine traffic stop during his work commute might end with a call to Border Patrol and separation from his family for whom he was the main breadwinner. He wouldn't be wrong to worry. For years, grants such as Operation Stone Garden have paid off local police to make such stops. With my great-grandfather's accent and his home in a predominantly immigrant neighborhood, he would have been an obvious target for those so-called saturation patrols. And the moment someone found out about those cigarettes my great-grandmother smuggled, they'd label her a criminal and just return her to a country that was actively trying to kill her. Undocumented immigrants are not the strangers or aliens we make them out to be. They're our parents, our children, our grandparents, our great-grandparents. They're fellow travelers on a journey so many of our families have also made. Would we treat immigrants differently if we remembered that we knew them? Would we still want Stone Garden, knowing it wasn't free money but a payoff for turning in our own mothers and fathers? Would we still believe that since someone will receive Stone Garden funds anyway, it might as well be us and not outsiders shipping our aunties and uncles away? Would we still insist Stone Garden enhances security and safety if our own grandparents were afraid to call the police when they were victims of violent crimes? Would we really accept our children being deported to face death in countries they barely know if it brought us some shiny new equipment and helped Border Patrol get their numbers up? Supervisors, please, remember that when we talk about Stone Garden's victims, we aren't talking about strangers unknowable and unknown. We're talking about family, we're talking about us. Please remember the true price of Stone Garden funds and reject them along with all the deadly strings attached to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay. Our next speaker is going to be Mari Haredes. Mari, if you'd come forward. And following Mari is going to be Jaime Tadeo and Brad Cowan. If you could please line up over here in the aisle maybe so we can keep this thing moving along. Mari, you have the microphone. Please give your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mari Haredes, live and work in Menlo Park. And I want to say that there really isn't one boogeyman on, that runs Pima County. None of you are, actually. But it is difficult to face these decisions as we all know. We see this every Tuesday. But there are a few things in my heart that I know are absolutely true. Our community hurts. We see that in so many different ways. And trust, we have such a lack of it. How do we do the work of encouraging different community members to believe in our electoral system, to believe that electing people and to get, that the ballot, the whole process, that they're a part of it, that it's important to them to be a part of that system? It's moments like these where I know down the road, the conversations will be like, "Yeah, but remember Operation Stone Garden," or, you know, "This electoral system is just a bust. Forget about it." I worry about that, that it happened, it's common conversations. But trust in this community is a commodity many folks unfortunately don't understand as we go about this work of fighting for and serving. Jumping back on this, based on your assessment, it doesn't repair trust. Trust in our sheriff's office, trust that families feel safe, trust in you. How can you sit there and not guarantee to us and our board that if this decision today is yes, that Pima County will not be complicit in the separation of families? Please, how, that's, that is our concern. How can you tell us that Pima County will not be complicit in the separation of families? Please vote no in returning OS funds to Pima County. It's too early. We don't, first of all, I mean, if we were to consider any changes, we, how can you want us to trust our sheriff at this point? It's too early. We, how can we, yes, you've outlined all the changes that, in the memo, that you feel are good, that he's doing a good job, that he's, that he's done the things that we've asked him to do. But I think we need more time, you know, to trust in that. And as well as, you know, whether or not Stone Garden is, it represents our values, that's another conversation. But above all, please, how can we guarantee us that Pima County overall will not be complicit in the separation of families?
Thank you, Mari.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Jaime, I don't see you standing up over here, so I'm going to go to Brad Cowan. If you're going to come up, please come up, Jaime, and wait over here by the side.
Good morning.
Mr. Cowan, please give us your name for the record. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
It is Brad Cowan. Thank you. So many activists here, appreciate them being here, I guess. Be aware that there is a whole lot of constituency of you people that are not represented by these activists that are here today. Okay? First of all, there was a gentleman earlier that stood up and gave some facts about an incident in 1976. I question a lot of the facts that he gave, but since it's been so long ago and it's, I haven't thought about it in years, I'm not going to address it, but be suspicious of what the facts was that he gave. Okay. On about what I is here for. We're here, politics versus public safety is the way I say it. I'm a law and order type of guy. I do not believe that persons violating the rules should be able to push the agenda. I support accepting the Stone Garden grant with no strings attached. As with all the previous sheriffs. The sheriff is not enforcing immigration law. He is dealing with illegal operations, some of which are involving activities along our southern border. Allow the sheriff department the tools he needs to complete his job. And the money will be awarded to, the money will be awarded and spent as intended, even if Pima County does not accept. So there's no money savings to the taxpayer. It amazes me that we are even debating this issue at this point. For twenty-eight years, I was a state-certified police officer. I worked for a small state agency, and many of my duties were in rural-related. I lived in the Three Points area for over twenty years. I have seen firsthand how the illegal operations along our southern borders have affected our citizens. I personally have been a victim of some of these operations, along with investigating some of them in the line of my duties. For many years, I depended on all other agencies in the area. My first felony arrest was prompted by a couple of Border Patrol agents that were suspicious of bloody handprints on the truck of an individual's car. I was recently contacted by some of my rural residents that I have worked with over the years. They are busy and cannot take the time off to come to this meeting. They're running businesses, they're doing jobs, they're trying to conduct their daily lives. They have great concerns for the safety of their families and employees because of the illegal border activity. The amount of damage done to their property and business operations is great. Just the mental toll taken by never knowing who, how many, or what is happening on or near their residences is more than you can imagine. Theft, burglary, vandalism, intimidation are all commonplace out there. It is necessary for our elected sheriff be given the tools and allowed to do the job he was elected to do with no strings attached. That is what the ballot box is for. The sheriff needs, the sheriff deals with all problems from crime to humanitarian issues. Our general welfare is of his concern.
Your time has expired, sir. Could you please complete your comments?
I'll stop.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Tadeo, are you here? Please come forward, give your name for the record. You have three minutes. Our next two speakers are going to be Andrew Gallow and Fred Markinson. Okay, so just stand right here, just stand where you are, you're fine. Mr. Tadeo, please go ahead.
My name is Jaime Tadeo, and I am here at a personal capacity and affiliated with any Pima County or city commissions. I am an undocumented member of the community, and I'm just here again to kind of share a little bit about what I have to deal with in my community and as a friend, as a brother. We just recently started seeing, you know, in the media, Facebook, about community members that are picked up by the sheriff's department, then later are being taken away by the Border Patrol. And this is what Stone Garden is going to do to our community. It's just going to inflict more fear. Like Ryan said earlier, there's countless of GoFundMe accounts that we cannot keep track of. Is that what you want, that our Tucson community, Pima County community, to be like? To be just having to worry about who's going to be next? A lady who I, who goes to church with my mom got detained. That little community, just by the Valencia and Twelve area, was just in shock because we, it could have been anywhere, right? As an undocumented- As an undocumented community member, this is what my life is every single day. I have to worry about who is going to be detained. Is it going to be my neighbors? Is it going to be my friends, my brothers? Even, even my parents. So the least we can do as, you know, as your political power is just to protect our community. The various times that I have been stopped by the sheriff's departments because of an infraction, whatever has been an experience that I always, I always keep in mind because they're the ones that always give me the tickets. And when I'm pulled over by Tucson Police Department, it's always a nice conversation. And how do I, how do I go back to that conversation? Is it because of my skin color? Is it because I'm being profiled? I don't know. But Stone Garden might be a gateway to, an opportunity to have people be profiled in Pima County. And we cannot, we cannot allow to the, to the sheriff's departments to do the work that the Border Patrol is doing. We could just not allow that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is going to be Andrew Gallow. Mr. Gallow, if you'd please come forward, give us your name for the record. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
My name is Andrew Gallow. I am a resident of Diamond Bell Ranch, which is actually a working cattle ranch out at Three Points. It's about 10 miles away from Oral Biscuit Junction. And Sharon Bronson over there is my supervisor. I'm pretty easygoing, but when somebody messes with my security and my neighbor's security to prove a political point, I get upset. For years and years and years, Stone Garden has been rubber stamped by this supervisor board, and then all of a sudden, last year, it's jerked. Now what changed? Oh, wait a minute, we got a Republican senator, I mean, Republican sheriff now. And we've got a gentleman named Trump who's also President of the United States. Is this a public service or a public safety issue? Or is this a political issue? I am a resident of District Three. I wonder how many of these people out here are directly affected by people crossing the border in that area? Especially this year, now when you have hundreds of crossers every week, the Border Patrol has to address those individuals, which leaves large gaps of security which nobody's monitoring because they don't have the people doing that. That's where the sheriff's department comes in. They're supposed to interdict traffickers of drugs and people. That's one of their primary missions with this grant. And I don't mind separating somebody from their family if it's a drug dealer and we give them 20 years of separation. That doesn't bother me at all. Now, it's interesting. There was a letter to the editor in the Tucson paper about three months ago. And they said, "We feel really secure. We've never had any problems living close to the border." I went down to the bottom where they had their name. They live in Oral Valley. How many of the people around here don't live close to the border? I didn't know anything about this Justice Alliance, the Black Shirt guys here. So I looked it up on their Facebook page. I took some random names, checked the addresses, and they live nowhere near. They were up on Push Ridge area. They, one of them was a Canadian, I think, who was a snowbird. And then, are they a political or humanitarian organization? I really couldn't tell. But I did take a screenshot from Sunday, and the screenshot says, "I effin' hate Trump and the Republicans," right off of their Facebook page. I looked at it yesterday and it was gone. I guess maybe they wised up and somebody jerked it knowing this meeting was coming up. So, in closing, who are you going to vote with? People who don't live near the border? Or the poor lady with her kids, a young mother with kids living in a mobile home on a couple acres, whose husband is working a night shift and doesn't feel secure, just to prove a point for these people that aren't directly affected? I am done. Thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Markinson, you're going to be next. Just a second. You'll be followed by Rachel Sedwick and Roger Score.
Thank you, supervisors.
Please come forward if you're Rachel and Roger so that quicker press can go.
My name is Fred Markinson. I live in District One. Any similarity between the sheriff deputy portrayed in the following scenario and actual deputies, living or deceased, is purely coincidental. Purely coincidental. The traffic is heavy tonight. I'm on Stone Garden time now and under the supervision of a Border Patrol commander. I have to completely adjust my thinking. I'm no longer Sheriff Deputy Adam Conflicted, who is carrying out our mission to protect and to serve the residents of Pima County. My mission is now to ferret out suspects that I can turn over to the Border Patrol. If I wanted to round up undocumented immigrants who are peacefully contributing to our community, I'd be a Border Patrol officer. So why am I doing Stone Garden time? Oh, yeah, I remember now, for the money. My wife assures me that we can get along without it, but I want to be a good provider for my wife and our two children. But I don't know how much longer I can live with myself. I wonder if I'll ever get the courage to refuse Stone Garden overtime. Maybe I'll be bailed out of my dilemma on May 7th by the Pima County Board of Supervisors voting to reject Operation Stone Garden. I don't understand why there isn't enough money in the budget to pay for us to do overtime to do the work we were hired to do. I've heard that Sheriff Napier turned back $5 million of $165 million of his general budget that he didn't use last year. There is always a need for overtime in order to keep our community safer. Sheriff Napier claims that the Stone Garden overtime does this. But the mandate of the grant is that we find undocumented immigrants that can be turned over to the Border Patrol. I see a, I see a possible victim now. The driver of that 1996 blue Chevrolet didn't signal when he changed lanes. And he and his passengers appear to be people of color. I hope they all have their documentation. Oh, how I detest Stone Garden time. My wife's parents are from Mexico, but fortunately, she was born in the United States. I can't imagine how I would cope if she was eligible to be deported. Time to turn on my siren and time to end. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fred. Ms. Sedwick, would you come forward, please? Thank you for being here. Appreciate your presence. You have, please give us your name for the record and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Sure. Board of Supervisors, Mr. Huckleberry, my name is Rachel Sedwick. I am, I'm actually a TUSD board member and I'm also running for Pima County Supervisor. So I'm actually here as an individual citizen. My comments were actually a bit more general and are not so geared towards Stone Garden. I apologize if that wasn't clear on the, on the card. I was here at the last meeting and I filled out a call, a card, to come up and speak and I wasn't able to come up. But I did get to watch the end of the meeting and I appreciate, Mr. Elias, when you asked the attorney from Slenia and Russo, I believe it is, to, to please contact me and let me know that the fact that the Board of Supervisors has authorized nearly half a billion dollars in funding for charter schools doesn't hurt the taxpayer. I thought that was an interesting argument, excuse my voice, because it seems to me that that's more of a Republican argument. And it's my understanding that the majority of this board is Democratic. And it's my understanding that the Democratic Party has actively stood out against funding for-profit or for-profit charters and has been arguing very actively for increased transparency when it comes to the charter school law. And so I was surprised to hear this argument that it benefits, that it doesn't hurt the taxpayer. When my concern was actually the, the public school district. So it's actually the underlying issue and not so much what happens to the taxpayer. Although it is important and I am a taxpayer in Pima County. Excuse me. So I find it interesting when it comes to issues like Rosemont Mine or the Stone Garden grant, when the board, when the majority is suddenly able to forget the argument about the taxpayer and is more willing to focus on the underlying issue. Rosemont Mine is going to happen. It, it will benefit the taxpayer by bringing in many, many jobs. Although, of course, there are environmental issues and there is no question that the science is very, very important. Similar to the, this is similar to the charter school issue, I feel. When you say that the issuing, you know, authorizing this money doesn't hurt the taxpayer, it does hurt the public school district system. But, but that was not your major, major concern at that time. Now, when it comes to Stone Garden, it seems to be, once again, the taxpayer is, whether or not we're benefited from this grant is not the most important thing to this Democratic majority. What is more important is the actual issue. And, and I hear, I know that there is a trust issue in Pima County. And I think that sort of flip-flopping is, is part of the reason why. If you argue one day that what is best for the taxpayer is what we should do, then that should be the argument that you go with all along. If you argue that it's the underlying issue that is most important...
Ms. Sedwick, you have, you expended all your time. Please complete your comments.
Sure. If you argue that it's the underlying issue that's most important, then you should use that argument all along. I think that would go to create a great deal more trust in the Pima County Board of Supervisors and our local government in general.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Sedwick.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you being here. Our next speaker is going to be Roger Score. Thank you for being here, Mr. Score. Please give us your name for the record and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors. Our next two speakers are going to be Lena Rothman and Kevin McNichols.
Board Chairman, we hear people come up here and speak about the separation of families. We heard nobody mention the drug dealers, the sex traffickers coming across and using children to get them into this country. We're not separating families. A lot of these children are being brought here so they can get across. They're being used as decoys. We hear about the sheriff if he's working with Border Patrol. But we hear nothing out of these people about all the people that are saved by our sheriff's department, the lives that are saved, that they're found out in the desert, ready to die. But they encourage more to come across the desert, to risk their life, to die out in the desert sun. We don't hear any mention of the families in the United States that have lost family members because they were murdered by illegal aliens. And yes, under U.S. definition in law, an immigrant, somebody that came here legally and is seeking citizenship. An illegal alien is written throughout U.S. law. So let's get the terminology right. They are not immigrants, they are illegal aliens. They're breaking our law. We need this money. We need the sheriff down there. I spend many days along the border. Anybody that thinks along the border is a happy-go-lucky time, I ask you to come with me someday. You can come down there, walk with me. See how nice it is. Spend a few nights down there. See how pretty it is. We got to secure our border. If Japan was going to invade us today, they wouldn't bomb Pearl Harbor. They'd go into southern Mexico, come up through Mexico with the help of the Mexican government. You people would welcome them in here. We'd make citizens out of them and elect them to Congress. That's what you've been doing. You put them in charge of our government. But instead, the foreign influence sits right here. The foreign influence of our government has used supporting the drug cartels, the sex traffickers, the legal activities that are coming up from Mexico. That's, that's where the foreign influence sits. It's right here in Pima County. Every other county surrounding us, every other county offered has taken the Stone Garden grant money, except this one. And right here is the hole in our country.
Okay. Our next speaker is Lena Rothman. Lena, are you, are you ready?
Hi.
All right, just a moment, just a moment, come to order. What went on over there? Our security guard is over there? Anybody see? You know what? Mr. Score, you've done that before in the past, so I have plenty of reason to believe that that's true. You've been vulgar in here and you've been asked to leave before. So you know what? Please stop, please stop. Let's have the room come to order. Mr. Score, please move away. Move over here. I'm going to ask him to move over there and Lelani, please, don't, don't call out from your seat any longer. Everybody over there, next time it happens, you're going to go. That's all there is to it. Same with you, Mr. Score. Everybody got it? Stay away from each other. Ms. Rothman, I apologize for that disturbance. I apologize to the rest of the audience, but that's the last time, okay? That's how it's going to happen. And that's exactly how it does happen. That's why I mentioned it several times over, for everybody to behave. So please, behave. Ms. Rothman, I apologize again. Name for the record and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Lena Rothman. Well, something came up just a few minutes ago. There's people that are talking about how unsafe it is at the border and they mentioned Aravaca. I've just spent two, almost three months in Aravaca, visiting with people. I know people that sleep with their doors open. They don't seem to be living in fear. Anyway, I'll just move on. I just wanted to say that, you know, that's an outright lie. And so, Board of Supervisors and general public, you might not see the commonality of quote-unquote unauthorized migrants fleeing poverty, fleeing gang violence, or corrupt government. But you might not see the commonality between people running and Jews trying to escape Germany in the 1940s. As a Jew, I'm speaking about the morality of participating and enforcing and capitulating to an environment of bigotry, hatred, and fear. We cannot forget history because it serves as a blueprint for today. I'm speaking to the morality of each of your positions that are going to vote on the Stone Garden funds. I don't have much more to say, someone else could use my other two minutes. So that's all I wanted to say. I wanted to connect with each one of you and ask you to not support the Stone Garden grant, that even though this is 2019, it can be 1940s, as we're seeing huge shifts in this country right now. And we each have a responsibility for each other.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is going to be Kevin McNichols, to be followed by Zaida Livier and Barney Brenner. So, Zaida, if you'd please come forward, Barney, if you'd please come forward. Mr. McNichols, thank you for your patience. Appreciate you being here. Give us your name for the record. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Chairman, thanks for allowing me to be here. It is with honor that I had the opportunity to serve in law enforcement for over 20 years and worked more than the last 20 years in this particular area. No law enforcement officer goes to work each morning and saying, "How can I make someone's life miserable? How can I tear someone's family apart?" The ultimate goal in law enforcement is for voluntary compliance with the laws that exist. If you have voluntary compliance, then there's less need for enforcement. Grants like Operation Stone Garden provide the opportunity for what is normally a reactive type department. Most police departments respond to calls for service either, and that, that's where they focus most of their areas, is where their calls for service are. Grants like Stone Garden allow you the opportunity to take information and intelligence and proactively look for those areas where high criminal activity such as narcotic... proactively look for those areas where high criminal activities such as narcotics smuggling and stolen vehicles are being transported through and to actually saturate that area. Sometimes officer presence alone is enough to disrupt or detour people from committing crimes in that area with just their presence alone. So I encourage you and urge you to utilize the monies that are available to support the sheriff and his staff in carrying out their mission of public safety. In addition to that, you have before you a recommendation not to accept a Governor's Office of Highway Safety Seatbelt Grant. The number-one killer of teens in the United States is motor vehicle collisions. Over 4,000 kids every year die. Over 10,000 adults in 2017 were killed being completely unrestrained. It's an opportunity to participate in a national campaign where the focus is on education and not necessarily enforcement. Although it's an enforcement grant, some other violation has already occurred before you even stopped to be told about not wearing your seatbelt. And therefore, I would encourage you to support that. Also, you talk about low-income families. If you, not having your kids in a car seat is a primary violation. And so you can be stopped for that. But there are resources between police department, the health department, Banner Health, where if you don't have the money where you can afford a car seat, one will be provided for you if you reach out to those entities. And also, there are certified technicians who will show you how to properly use that. Today, I encourage you and I urge you to support both Stone Garden and the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant. Thank you.
Zaida Olivier, if you'd please come forward. Hi, Zaida, how are you doing? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Please give your name for the record and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zaida Olivier. I am a member of the Community Law Enforcement Partnership Committee. I was the chair for quite some time. And I do want to just get started with what we so far know, which is that the Stone Garden grant comes with absolutely zero metrics, absolutely zero data on what it's supposed to do, what we want. We know what the grant says we're supposed to do, and it explicitly says that we are not to do day-to-day policing duties while we are on that clock. Another thing that we know, and something else that keeps coming up in that, was the bulk of the conversation between what we would call community members and law enforcement or activists and law enforcement in the partnership commission, that we are anti-police or that this is completely political, and it is absolutely political. Why is it political? We did take that grant for many, many years, but things have changed. Things are going to continue to change. What we are saying is this, is that DHS is highly vulnerable to the needs and wants of the administration. The current administration has gone beyond what any other administration has done. DHS is there to serve at the whim of the administration. It's not there to protect the Constitution. It's not there to follow international human rights laws. It's not there to protect day-to-day people here on the ground from any harm. What it is there to do is enforce internal policy. And what we've seen internal policy, the internal policy that we've seen so far, 2,000, almost 3,000 children, if not thousands more, separated from their families. We have 771, 471 parents who were deported without their children. We have countless children lost in the system. We've seen three small children, three, two small children and one teenager die horrible deaths while they were in Border Patrol custody. We've seen DHS gas refugees at the border. We have seen them do very unspeakable and despicable things. So if we are trying to roll for the future and plan about the future, we need to really stick to no Stone Garden for our community. Refugees are not going to stop coming, migrants are not going to cease. We have numbers that are in the millions, 50 million people moving in the next 30 years from Central America and Mexico. This is the time to start working towards the future. And we have to say no to Stone Garden, no to going into a contract with DHS that's absolutely vulnerable, has zero transparency-
Your time has expired, Zaida. Please complete your comments.
It has no transparency and we have seen is absolutely inhumane on a number of levels. So please, Supervisor Bronson and Valadez, stick with your promise of 2018 and say no to Stone Garden funds now and for the remainder of the years.
Thank you, Zaida. Thank you, Zaida. Our next speaker is going to be Barney Brenner. Mr. Brenner, please give us your name for the record and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
I'm Barney Brenner. I'm here to support the acceptance by the Board of the Stone Garden funding. First, I want to say that none of my comments are aimed at Supervisor Christie and Supervisor Miller because they've already demonstrated that they're eager to support our Sheriff's Department. But for the other three on the board, I want to remind you what Sheriff Napier's job is. And it's to protect you and the rest of us. Have any of you ever looked at his resume? I'd encourage you to take a minute and do so and see how it stacks up against yours. He is the most qualified sheriff we have ever had in Pima County history. Look at his resume if you don't think that's a fact. And one of the things on that resume is that three times and other administrations, the Department of Justice, asked him to pass judgment on federal grants. And to remind you of what your job is, at the top of the list is to properly fund public safety and properly fund our road maintenance. And I have to say, you're not doing a very good job at either of those. Now, one of your excuses for refusing the Stone Garden money is that people will be reluctant to report crimes. So we can understand that means they're reporting crimes now, but won't if our sheriff has more money to do the job we elected him for. And I'd like to point out one other thing that's been briefly mentioned, but the three no votes on this board in 2006 voted yes to accept Stone Garden funding. And they voted yes in 2007. And yes in '08 and '09 and '10 and every year through 2016 to help augment our Sheriff's Department funding. So it's pretty darn disingenuous and hypocritical and disturbing, to say the least, to reduce the funds that could be used for our Sheriff's Department. And on a similar hypocritical vein, during every year of the previous administration, children were separated at the border. It's automatic. When parents are arrested, you don't throw the kids in jail with them. The kids are taken into protective custody, but the idea that this is something new is just not so. But there was not a peep during the previous administration, and I wanted to point that out as well. And even the county administrator says you should take this money, which gives you-
Mr. Brenner, you've expended all your time. Please complete your comments quickly.
Wow. And I promised you, gosh, sorry it took so long, but then-
Thank you for your comments.
All I would say is-
Appreciate it, sir.
I would encourage you to accept it and it would be good for our county.
Please have a seat. Thank you. Again, I'm going to ask these folks here up front to be careful with your signs. While he was speaking, you had him held up kind of high and it does obstruct the view of other people. Our next speaker is going to be Isabel Garcia. Ms. Garcia, if you'd please come forward. The following speakers are going to be Carla Bissel and Kathleen Wisnick. Thank you, Isabel. Please give us three minutes and you have, well, just appreciate you being here.
Good morning, Isabel Garcia, and I live in the county. I was going to re-iterate so that everybody knows from the language, and Ryan did it, but I think it's really important. These are not our arguments. This is what Pima County Sheriff is obligated to do. Saturation points, saturation patrols, excuse me, of known communities. High levels of criminal activities due to illicit acts by undocumented aliens and narcotics. Patrol interdiction operations. What do you think those are? Consisting of reasonable suspicion stops of potential undocumented aliens. And they always add narcotics because, you know, that always really incenses us, even though our war on drugs is such a lie. We would have gone after the big banks if we were after the drug dealers, really. It's a big lie. And coordination of all resources, intelligence, and get a load of this one. All Stone Garden funds allocated must support CBP Border Security Mission. That's what it says. It says it's got to be deployments pre-coordinated, approved, and directed by the Border Patrol. Why do the Border Patrol, who have four to 5,000 agents in the Tucson Sector alone, need our 800 or so officers, except to do strict collaboration? Collaboration of what? Of stopping brown people, and you know it. It's stopping brown people. And they said it so much. And it seems like we're, you know, being told over and over, "You took your beating for 10 years, why are you complaining now?" That's what women have been told all along and others have been told all along. We objected then, but even if we didn't, we object now. And stop trying to cram this down our throat. We object to it now. All of you who have thrown that at us. Oh, you've accepted. No, we were against it. It's just at that time, we had a huge influx of immigrants because of NAFTA and border policies through here. That's why there was people trying to save lives. The other thing that is really terrible to say that we're going to send sheriffs to see if they vandalize water jugs of only humane borders, of course, not no more deaths who are right now being prosecuted for trying to save lives, right? No, no, we're going to prosecute those who vandalize the stations of, really? Jose Rambla was murdered May 30th of 2014 by a Border Patrol agent, U.S. citizen, running away. And what did we get? Border Patrol agents? We didn't even get a probable cause determination process? We didn't get a preliminary hearing? The prosecutor just said, "Oh, we're not going to charge him," and those are the people that we're going to trust to put these charges against? Come on. You know, the city, we had lots of problems with the city PD. And our community stood up and took action, and we work with the city PD now. What about the sheriff? What about the sheriff? Do we need to act out and throw ourselves under the cars so that you pay attention? Because this is what's happening. You are taking money and I guess it's so big, I guess we could follow Trump's line to say, "Oh, we can't not do business with Saudi Arabia. We've got billions of dollars." Forget that, it's immoral and we're going to do the same here? You must say no to this. And I want to end with this poor kid who was arrested because of a sheriff-
You're out of time, Isabel. I apologize.
Yeah. And that is wrong. He should be graduating. He's an undocumented American, that kid.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is going to be Sidra Bissel. I'm sorry, I can't read it entirely. Bissel is the last name?
Tara.
Tara?
And she's left, sir.
Okay. Very fine. You know, Ms. Wisnick, I see that you spoke earlier during call to the audience, and I'd asked people that they'd only speak once today. I'm going to be, I'm going to give you some time to speak, but I'd ask everybody else to be aware of that, you know? We're trying to be as efficient as we can because we have a very huge, come on, come on, let's move, so that we get you moving. It's okay. I did mention it at the beginning of the meeting, but please.
Okay.
Please, go ahead.
My name is Kathleen Wisnick and I live in Aravaca, and I am here today to speak in support of the Stone Garden Grant. This grant provides much-needed funding for specialized equipment, payment for overtime, and mileage for our Pima County deputies. These funds will help support public safety for the Pima County citizens as well as support other efforts on the border to reduce illegal human and drug trafficking, crossing the southern Arizona border, and it will also help secure that border. People crossing the border are bringing with them diseases that have been eradicated in the U.S. for years. Just last week-
Please, please address the Board of Supervisors, Ms. Wisnick.
Just last week, I heard that there are cases of measles in 24 of the 50 U.S. states. Other diseases that are being detected include tuberculosis, typhoid, hepatitis A and C's. These conditions constitute a public health and public safety crisis on the border as well as the United States of America. The number of illegals crossing the border in Arizona has an economic workforce, public health, and public safety impact on all Arizonans and others. Innocent people on both sides of the border are being hurt. I am a proud American and I appreciate Sheriff Napier and his sheriff's efforts, especially in our rural communities, in helping to manage this crisis. I strongly recommend the County Board of Supervisors vote to accept the Stone Garden Grant. It is time to put the citizens of Pima County first and politics aside. Thank you for this opportunity to address the Stone Garden Grant.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is going to be Rachel Port, to be followed by Kristin Randall and Miki Niemi. So, Rachel, please come forward. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Rachel Port. I am opposed to Stone Garden. And I was thinking of what I wanted to say today. And I thought about my own family's immigration story. And I thought about the license plate recorders that are part of the grant. And then I thought, how are we going to be made to feel secure and to feel safe with a policy by cooperating with an agency that we are told, has been told, is under, is under orders to become tougher and that knowing what it's been with the family separation at the border is essentially lawless? And I don't understand how our law enforcement is supposed to be helped to do their job to enforce laws when cooperating with an agency which doesn't recognize laws. Immigration laws, illegal immigration has been for my life, and that's more than 70 years, a civil matter, not a criminal matter. So we can't look at this as criminal. The criminals are those who insist on criminal policies. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is going to be Kristin Randall. Kristin, please come forward. Give us your name for the record and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Hi, my name is Kristin Randall. I just want to say that I have owned a house in Aravaca for 11 years and I lived there full-time for nine of them. I have always felt safe in Aravaca, always. When there has been crime, it's generally been little kerfuffles with locals there. We're not talking, when we use these terms, cartels or people coming across the border and committing crimes, this is just not happening in my small community of 700. I feel very safe there. And for Ms. Rothman, who talked about people leaving their doors unlocked, that's pretty much, that's a lot of people in Aravaca. Certainly, there are some who have giant fences around their properties, but that is- Certainly there are some who have giant fences around their properties, but that is by far the minority. Um, I wanted to talk about license plate readers for, for a little bit and I'm gonna get a bit wonky here. Um, all of you have received our memo with our sixteen points on it and I'm not gonna get into that, but I, I would like, um, just to, to talk about these readers for a second. These lights, there are two of these that are in the grant. Currently, the Pima County Sheriff's Department has five of these units. They're, um, in specialty units with the auto theft and drug interdiction unit. The difference with these two is that they would be installed on regular patrol vehicles. So what happens is, and for anybody who is a libertarian or is concerned about civil liberties or, uh, at all, it is written into the grant language that you flip on the switch, they go on, whether you're on Stone Garden or not, and they indiscriminately scrape data from any license plate that it scans around you. These data go into a database where they are shared and that data is shared not just with other law enforcement and ICE and Border Patrol, it's also shared with private companies. Because this company, the Vigilant, uh, the Vigilant Database and the Vigilant Systems is owned by Motorola. These data are shared with, um, mall cops, they're shared with advertisers, they're shared with insurance companies, they are shared with debt collectors. These data, when they're collected, um, have your information on it, they are geo-tagged and time-tagged. I think everybody really needs to think about that. When you're worried about disabling your cookies on, on Google or when you're worried about big government, um, following you or watching you or, or your cellphone, think about these license plate scanners for a minute. Um, I say no on Stone Garden. I stand by the commission's vote on that and I, I wanna thank you very much.
Thank you. Miki Niemi, please come forward. Did you leave? Okay. Next speaker's gonna be Dion Hemink or Hymink?
Hymink.
Hymink, thank you, sir. And to be followed by David Eppleheimer and Betz Putnam Hidalgo. Please, sir.
Chairman, members of the board, appreciate your time. Um, I'm here and, uh, would ask you to approve, uh, the, um, the funds for Operation Stone Garden. Um, I believe that the Sheriff's Department needs this money, uh, for resources. Sheriff Napier has, has indicated that there's a real need to upkeep on, on equipment, whether it's, it's vehicles or helicopters or, or overtime. And there's been an issue, well, it's been made an issue that, uh, you know, this is something that is, you know, uh, against people and illegal aliens and stuff like that. As a healthcare worker in this community, I see up close and personal every day, all right, the human suffering that takes place, okay, in our hospitals, okay, from people who come across the border illegally. I've taken care of many of these people, uh, you know, broken people, uh, you know, women who have been sexually assaulted. And, uh, my heart goes out to these individuals. Uh, the, the trek that they make from these Central American countries is just enormous and the human suffering along that is enormous. But I think that we've conflated the issues. I think that public safety needs to come first. Um, I don't want, uh, I don't want any human being to be treated unfairly or harshly or inhumanely. But at the same token, the residents of Pima County deserve, uh, a, a law enforcement operation that is fully funded and can protect them from the people who are not the good people who are looking to come here for, you know, economic prosperity, okay, but those individuals who look to do us harm. And so I would ask you, all of you, to support Operation Stone Garden, support the sheriff and the Border Patrol and their efforts to keep us safe.
Thank you very much. Mr. Eppleheimer, please come forward. You have three minutes. Give us your name for the record. Thank you for being here and being patient, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board of Supervisors. I'm David Eppleheimer. I'm a resident of Pima County, uh, and taxpayer in Pima County and chairman of the Pima County Republican Party. I am here speaking for the party. We have a documented crisis on the border as finally reported by mainstream news outlets of all types. The resulting situation reminds me of a line from the J.C. Creed. Some of you might remember the J.C.'s, they were a public service organization. "We are a country of laws, not of men." The first time I heard that, it puzzled me, but now I get it. We're moving toward a country of people's feelings and opinions, not laws. I urge this board to ignore, disregard, if you will, a vocal but tiny infinitesimal minority of the fringe of the left that advocates for open borders. It has been said that you don't have a country if you don't have borders. Do the right thing for Pima County and its public safety. Accept the funds.
Thank you, sir. Betz Putnam Hidalgo, please come forward. Our next two speakers following Betz are gonna be Ashley Edget and Marion Chubon.
Hello, my name is.
Please, Betz, thank you, you have three minutes.
My name is Betz Putnam Hidalgo and I'm speaking today for the Tucson Peace Center, which is an umbrella organization for hundreds of social justice groups, yes, activists, that dirty word, in Tucson. Tucson Peace Center says no to Stone Garden funds. We know that presumptive traffic stops do not make us safe. We know that police or sheriff department working with ICE and Border Patrol does not make us safe, whereas a sanctuary city would make all of us safe, our whole community. We know that if more than fifty percent of drugs come through authorized checkpoints, we are the last people who should be policed.
Excuse me, Betz, I'm sorry.
By all means.
Sheriff, we need to have this person removed.
And will I have time to repeat myself?
Yes, you'll, you'll.
Thank you. We know that if more than fifty per-
Wait, 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 let's take care of the problem before we do. I'm sorry, Betz, I apologize to you. This woman right here with a flag, you need to leave, I'm sorry. I appreciate you being here, but you have to stay in order if you're gonna remain. Betz, please continue.
We know that if more than fifty percent of drugs come through authorized border entryways, it is not us or our communities that need to be policed. In any other country, we would be looking at the Border Patrol agents and the ICE agents that are working at those entry points where those drugs are entering. We would know that, but when it comes to our country, we police our communities instead. Tucson Police, uh, I'm sorry, Tucson Peace Center is completely unconvinced by the idea that funds, um, should, that these funds can go towards humanitarian needs. And finally, we know that there is nothing peaceful about checkpoints and militarizing our border and making it unlivable for the original peoples of this land and for the rest of us. Tucson Peace Center says no to Stone Garden funds. We know better than to trust Sheriff Napier and so-called conditions will not solve the problems with this, with these funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Betz. Thank you for your patience as well. Next speaker's Ashley Edget. Ashley, thank you for being here, appreciate your time. Yeah, please give us your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Ashley Edget. Um, I'm a community member, a teacher, and a soon-to-be nurse here in Tucson, Arizona. And I'm here because my community, my community's children and the health of my community matter a great deal to me. Um, I'm, wanna start out by mentioning that in the spring break of this past year of the Tucson Unified School District, a mother, father, and their twelve-year-old daughter were detained by the Sheriff's Department for having tinted windows. Then they had Border Patrol called on them and the entire family, including the twelve-year-old daughter, was detained. Imagine being on your spring break and instead of being on spring break with your parents, being detained by Border Patrol. This has to do with Stone Garden. Those are the peoples that supposedly protect our community arresting a twelve-year-old child. Last week, a senior from Desert Vista High School who was supposed to be graduating next week is now in immigration detention because he was stopped by the sheriff who then called Border Patrol. Is this the kind of way we wanna treat our children? I don't think so. Now he's in detention instead of graduating. So many families are separated in our community, every week, every month, because of this sheriff collaboration. Those same family members are then trying to come back to be with their families and many of them cross through the desert. When families cross through the very dangerous and vast west Arizonan desert, many of them die. Oh, since two thousand, more than three thousand, three hundred people have died trying to get back to their loved ones. Just this week alone, three sets of remains had been recovered in the western Arizona desert that had not been found before. One of those remains had previously been reported both to the sheriff and the county one year ago and they had not collected them and there had been nothing done to recover who that person was. We don't know their names, we don't know who they are. Perhaps they were my neighbor's father, their mother, perhaps they were someone you knew, someone, that someone here knew. Definitively, they were someone's child. These are lives that matter and they are lives that are being lost and disappeared in our county due to our negligence and due to the county's collusion with Border Patrol and with a draconian policy that is separating families and killing people through negligence. How many community members have been affected? We do not know. How many lives have been lost and families separated? It is hard to tell. But we do know that Stone Garden, collaboration between the sheriff and Border Patrol is a great cause.
You have expended your time, please complete your comments quickly.
We refuse to collaborate with the federal immigration enforcement structures that are devastating communities. I please ask you, I implore you, to say no to Stone Garden today and protect our communities.
Thank you. Marion Chubon is our next speaker to be followed by Josh Leonard and Roger McManus.
Hi, my name is Marion Chubon and I am in District Four. Um, I'm a proud activist. Um, I don't know why that sounds like a dirty word. It is not. We are the people who keep showing up here again and again because a lot of people can't come here because they're working. But I'll tell you, I've been collecting signatures for the Tucson Families Free and Together Initiative, which will end Tucson collaboration, Tucson Police Department collaboration with Border Patrol and ICE. And I've collected nearly a thousand signatures. And the people that I'm talking to can't sign it fast enough. They, they, we say sanctuary, they sign it. Some people ask for some clarification. It's probably about eight to ten percent that say, no way, that's a bad idea. So we're in a bubble. We, we talk here in, in political spaces and it's a bubble. People are, do, people in our community understand that the collaboration between this administration and their Gestapo is a bad collaboration. Yes, it's Gestapo. So I've been thinking about my family that also emigrated from Poland and narrowly, my great-grandmother narrowly escaped the Nazis in, in nineteen fourteen in Poland. She made it here, well, it was the German Army. Her entire family, her six other siblings were, were exterminated, okay? The, this is what happens when, when we're talking about the dehumanizing of people. I visited a Holocaust museum in Philadelphia and I couldn't believe the similarities between the types of propaganda that were said against the Jews and even some of the things that have been said in here today, like they brought disease. Somebody in here today said they brought disease, that they're illegal. That, what we're seeing is so similar, I don't know how we can even consider taking it. And I'm, I'm one of those people that says, no, no conditions, no Stone Garden funds. Please stick to your commitment last year and accept no Stone Garden funds. Thank you.
Josh, thank you for being here, appreciate your time. Um, three minutes, give us your name for the record.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much to the entire, uh, Pima County Board of Supervisors. I appreciate that you guys are in the line of public service and that's something we should all aspire to. So thank you for giving me this time. Um, I also wanted to, to thank Supervisor Bronson. She wrote not too long ago, "Don't saddle us with Stone Garden baggage." If, if we have a Sheriff's Department that functions, you would think the number one priority would be community safety. And, and that's, that should be transparent to all of us. Instead, what we have is zero-tolerance stops. Those zero, zero-tolerance stops are happening four hundred percent more often without a citation than is happening, for example, in TPD. So, TBT, they take funding, but they don't use it to separate families. You know, for the entire year in TPD, it, it was something like three or five people who were rendered unto custody by, by Border Patrol. Whereas if we look at this current year where we stopped funding, there were hundreds of families that were separated. There were hundreds of times that people were sent, because these are pretextual stops. This is exactly the kind of, uh, loss of faith, I, I don't know what the word is. Uh, this is exactly the kind of problem that you're gonna have where you have under reporting in the communities that are supposed to be served. And, and again, quoting from, from, uh, Ms. Bronson's article, "A recent study found that more than forty percent of Latinos reported that they are less likely to contact the police if they are victims of a crime because state and local law enforcement are increasingly involved in enforcing immigration laws." Now, the claim is made by our sheriff that we need to be involved in border enforcement. We should have a role in that. But that's not our constitution. I think we all know that the federal government is the one that passes laws and enforces the border. There's good reasons for that. There's not, you know, there's a claim that somehow we're protecting us from murders or drugs or something like that. That's not what's happening. People are being stopped for the purpose of being deported. People are being racially profiled for that same purpose. Looking at funding, there's been some notion, and I've heard here a number of people who support Stone Garden, that there's, there's actual funding in Stone Garden. There isn't. Again, quoting, "For every dollar Pima County receives from the grant, it's estimated that Pima County taxpayers are on the hook for two other dollars."
You've expended your time, sir. I really appreciate you being here.
And thanks for reminding me.
Thank you. Please complete quickly.
Um, that's, that's sufficient and again, thank you very much to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Mr. McManus, please come forward. If you'd give us three minutes and your name for the record, I'd appreciate it.
My name is Roger McManus. I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to be here. And I would like to start off by saying, uh, I certainly appreciate and support the hard work of our county government and of the Sheriff's Department to keep us safe. Uh, also, um, the many Border Patrol agents that I work with, uh, I know to be hard-working people. They do hard jobs, often dangerous jobs, and their families and deserve our support. Nevertheless, I am totally opposed to accepting the Stone Garden funds. You have to remember, and I would say I'm a law enforcement sort of guy, that the Department of Homeland Security has unprecedented authority to waive federal laws, state laws, local laws, including Pima County laws. There is no reason to believe that they would not comply with our laws here in the county or in Tucson. There's no reason to believe that. I'm not saying that the agents are bad people. I'm just, a lot of them that I know are- I'm just, a lot of them that I know are trying to do a hard and often dangerous job. But this is an incredibly politicized situation, and when their bosses get the call from above, they do what they're told. And that's the way it works. Now, I've worked in, with government agencies in Africa, Southeast Asia, the Pacific, South America, and I got the sense. And the sense is, is when you don't have to obey the laws, you don't have to go through any procedure, you just are expected that you're going to wing it on your own. That's where we are right now. DHS behaves like they don't have to obey the law, because they don't. They can waive them, but they don't even have to bother there. They can just simply go ahead and do what they want. And the other federal agencies are paralyzed. People are afraid to talk anymore. They're clamming up. They're not doing the job. Now, I would just, in closing, emphasize, I very much appreciated the work, the comments on the license plates. Keep in mind, here's another case where data will be collected, and we don't have any part of it. The sheriff, total support for him, but the sheriff has noted, "We can't expect privacy on the public area." But we can expect our government to control how data are used by us, and you can't in this situation. The last thing I want to point out, Mr. Chairman, is while we're sitting in this room, the Department of Homeland Security is building a bridge across the Santa Cruz River. And I cannot find anybody in ADQ who even knows about it. I mean, we're not talking about border barriers here. We're talking about constructing a bridge across the river that many people in southern Arizona spend a good part of their lives trying to protect. And the laws that would apply to that construction are being totally ignored.
You've expended your time, Mr. McManus. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker's going to be Leilani Clark, to be followed by Brenda Wexler and Thank you for being here, Leilani. You have three minutes. Please give us your name for the record.
My name's Leilani Clark. Biagundiyate. Greetings. I'm just imploring you, please do not take this money that is attached to strings tied to white supremacy and xenophobia. How many times have we been here having to testify on the amount of damage facing our communities here in Tucson and southern Arizona due to racist and anti-immigrant policies enforcing the collaboration of local law enforcement and immigration facilitated by racial profiling? I am an African-American and Native American woman. I'm Dene in Santa Clara Pueblo, Kapowenge. Having been born and raised in Tucson, Arizona, I cannot tell you the exact number of times I have been asked by local law enforcement to show documentation proving my legal status. I cannot tell you how many times right-wingers have naively chided to me, asking me to go back, to go back to where I come from, or labeling me illegal, all due to my physical appearance and the color of my skin. This racial profiling is what is fracturing our communities. All of my friends whose families have been forcibly separated due to deportation has occurred because of being stopped by routine traffic violations driven forward by racial profiling. This looks like what happened to Desert View High School senior Thomas Torres on Thursday night, who should be graduating on May 22nd, but instead will be standing in front of an immigration judge to hear his fate on whether he will be forced, he will be facing deportation. Thomas was pulled over for a routine traffic stop by Pima County Sheriff's Department and immediately released into Border Patrol. All obligation and procedure, says Napier, due to 2010 Arizona State Law Senate Bill 1070, a racist law targeting community members who do not have the advantage of white supremacy nor white privilege, who are living in historic times of unprecedented xenophobia, anti-immigrant sentiment turned policy, turned law, turned ruined lives. A part of the criminal charges Thomas faces, including having, is including driving without a driver's license here in Arizona. And here in Arizona, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't, because Arizona does not issue licenses to undocumented people, forcing entire communities to remain in lower-class status with fewer rights and liberties, remaining as exploited labor and used as further profit margins for private detention centers. Let's not forget that this oppression is an industry. Let's not forget the strategic relationships between corporate lobbyists for private prisons and detention centers and conservative Arizona legislation that birthed Senate Bill 1070 before it became law in 2010. Inhumane, oppressive environments like this is what drove the people of South Africa to rise up and dismantle apartheid. So do not take this money. Dismantle racist laws. As a First Nations woman, I want to put on the record that I will never recognize foreign colonial borders violently separating indigenous nations like the Tonotham people, the Yoeme people, the Kikapu and Kokopan nations. And I just wanted to end my words with this quote. "One has not only a legal, but a moral responsibility to obey just laws. Conversely, one has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." Dr. Martin Luther King letter from Birmingham, Georgia. Thank you. Kuta waha.
Thank you very much, Leilani. Brenda Wexler, thank you for being patient, Brenda. Please give us your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Brenda Wexler. I've been here many times. I want to make some comments, some responses to some of the people who spoke today. Kristin spoke about those license plate readers. I went up to Locke and Cantada. I saw Land Rovers. I saw Teslas. I saw all late-year vehicles. I went down to Irvington in one of their shopping centers. I happened to see a broken taillight. I saw cars that, I didn't see a Tesla there, and I didn't see a Land Rover. And so the policy about license plate readers, I mentioned it before, as far as I'm concerned, is against poor people, and that's who's going to be surveilled. In terms of the comment that Barney back there with the white hair made, he said, "We took those funds this year, last year, the next year," and so on, and so on, and so on. What's different now? We are in a different time now. You cannot compare old times to now, and everybody here knows it. In terms of the man who represented the Republican Party, he said, "We're a nation of laws." Really? Just yesterday, Mnuchin totally, the Secretary of Treasury, totally refused to turn over the president's tax. You know what I'm talking about. We're a nation of laws. We've always been a nation of laws for rich, white people. That's it. And the guy who spoke about the Republican Party, who said, "We're a nation of laws." We're not a nation of feelings. Well, he's wrong. We're a nation of feelings. We are a nation of fear. Okay? You know how powerful fear is? I just want to see if I can, fear gets you to do things that you would not ordinarily do. Fear warps your judgment, and that's what's happening here with Stone Garden funds. And there may be someone who spoke, who was in somebody's community, who was afraid, but I want you to consider your entire community, Ms. Bronson, Miller, Valdez, and so on. We have fear in our community like we've never seen before, and I just want to say that I went to see the crucible, and I don't have time to talk about that, but that, if you think that fear didn't translate to President Truman and the House of Un-American Activities and people pointing to other people and destroying, and destroying communities, for what? Because the climate was such that it could happen, and it did happen, and it's going to happen again, and my community is feeling fear like they've never felt it before. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Mr. Sanders, thank you for being patient, sir. I appreciate that. If you'd give us your name for the record, you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors, please.
Good afternoon, and I am Brian Sanders. It's not Byron.
I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. It's quite all right. Thank you for what you're doing here today and for having this meeting. I did want to point out a few numbers that I haven't heard pointed out today. 1.8 million is the amount of the Stone Garden funds, correct? The size of the budget being, for the sheriff's department, at 160 million, so we're talking about 0.01 percent of the budget here. I don't have the outstanding resume of our sheriff, so someone would have to check my numbers on that. But I think what we're actually talking about here is not the numbers, because as it's been pointed out before, this will not save the county money. This will actually cost the county a significant amount of money. We absolutely can expect that Mr. Christie and Ms. Miller will support this kind of racist action, because they support every racist action they have ever seen, which has ever come across their desk. Now, talking about Mr. Huckleberry, if you want to talk about numbers, I believe the number I saw was that you make $288,000 a year to administer this county. Is that correct? The number that was released, I believe it was yesterday or the day before, for so-called humanitarian funds, is $12,000 more a year than you personally make. Now, that seems like a ridiculously low number, and you're very good with numbers. I'm sure you can understand the irony of you making as much as you are suggesting should be given to undocumented immigrant communities who are under assault. And let's go ahead and talk about this one thing that really hasn't been talked about too much. Ms. Wexler is absolutely correct. There is a deep irony in any Republican getting up in public in this country and saying that you have any interest in the rule of law. You don't. So quit saying that. Quit wrapping yourself in the flag, Ally. We all know you're full of it. It's nonsense. You don't care about the Constitution. You don't care about any of the things you talk about caring about. So that story has been told. We know that you're racist and that you're going to continue doing these things, because you yourself are a racist.
Please, sir.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Enough.
Excuse me, Ms. Miller.
That's an opinion.
Excuse me.
That is an opinion I would like to express.
Sir, I understand that. I'm just going to ask you to please not be vulgar when you are offering your opinions.
This is not a vulgar word, the word racist.
No, sir. Sir, just a minute, sir.
Here's a fact.
No, wait a minute. Wait a minute, sir. Please.
I agree with you. I will go ahead and agree with your stipulation.
I've asked everybody to be nice. Thank you very much.
Here's a very quick fact, is that I went on CNN, I said, "Donald Trump is a liar. He is going to tear this country apart." His friends in the Republican Party, including Ally and Steve, Mr. Napier, Mr. Huckleberry, you are collaborating with Donald Trump with this ridiculous attempt to take these funds. And let's face it, the stipulation that Mr. Napier...
You've expended your time, sir.
Let me just wrap up.
Please finish very quickly.
The stipulation that Mr. Napier must enforce these racist policies in a racist way, that, for the Republican Party, is not a bug.
Thank you.
That is a feature.
Thank you, sir.
Point of order, remove this man.
Appreciate it. You're done, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ally.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to repeat the fact that I'm, that was right on the edge of having to remove this gentleman who was the speaker. Please do not go there. It was right on the edge of it, so please. I have about 15 cards left, so I'm asking the Board of Supervisors, how long we want to continue this, or do you want to end the conversation now and begin a deliberation on Operation Stone Garden?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that there's anything more that can be offered by what's being discussed. I'm willing to listen to everybody till everybody's done, but I would insist, and I would ask, that Sheriff Napier have an opportunity to address this board.
Of course. That goes without saying.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You have a strong opinion on this? You want to go on, or you want to stop?
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem. I think everybody that has submitted a card should be able to speak, as we've sat here and listened to the majority. We should let everyone...
So then, that's what we're going to do, then? Because unless anybody has a strong sentiment? Not, okay? So what I'm going to ask is everybody to keep moving along quickly. Next speaker, Jessica Rodriguez, to be followed by Pat Malchow and Jackie Groch. Jessica, please come forward, and you have three minutes, and please give us your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Rodriguez. Buenos dias. I'm here on my personal capacity as a community organizer and not representing the voice of the clap scene. So I just wanted to recall some things. Also, in the last month and a half, I've been working tirelessly in deportation defense cases. We have seen an increased number of traffic stops that leads to detentions of people. This is taking youth, this is taking children, this is taking adults, this is tearing families apart. Recalling the March 19 incident, when DPS called for the assistance of Border Patrol, we got to see that the sheriff's department showed up. I will say it again, the sheriff's department assisted with the detention of a family. A 12-year-old was taken. A little girl was separated from her family while in custody of Border Patrol. She slept with other children in overcrowded rooms inside the facilities of Border Patrol. She slept next to the bathroom. On March 20, the next day, and I would like to see, we can get the cameras going for the Thank you.
You can set it down on that little gold thing right there.
So this is, we can see the sheriff's assisting with the detention of this child, right? Then we see over here, these two vehicles, is the sheriff's department's and the Border Patrol's vehicles outside Commercial Plaza in the south side, hanging out together, hunting people down, down the street. You can see them here. I went around them, I circled them to see if they could give me a ticket. I wanted a ticket to have this on the record. As soon as they saw me, they started circling, and they spread out. And it happens multiple times in the south side. You can see them. This was May 3 on Benson Highway in Irvington, not far from May 2, where the child, Thomas Torres, was taken into custody. This was the next day. They're still working together, even without the funds, and that's why we're questioning here from Sheriff Napier. He allows his deputies to work together with Border Patrol to do traffic stops that lead into detentions and sometimes deportation of our community members. The new program announced by ICE, that was announced yesterday, will allow local law enforcement to make immigration arrests and to temporarily detain migrants on behalf of the agency. This new program was made at the request of the National Sheriff's Association and the major county of sheriffs of America. The warrant service office program will deputize local officers to be able to issue warrants of arrest in order to detain. This is the direction that we're taking under this administration.
Jessica, you've expended all your time, so please complete.
It took about 45 seconds when I was trying to get the screen going.
Please continue, but finish up quickly.
Yeah. We're selling ourselves short when we are only ending Stone Garden. We must end all the ties that allow the collaboration of the sheriff's department with immigration agencies. Mr. Huckleberry...
Thank you.
Let's do the work. Let's really look into how really we can help migrants, but let's make sure we are not throwing other migrants to the wolves.
You're done. Thank you.
I urge you all to vote no on Stone Garden.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next speaker's going to be Pat Malchow, to be followed by Richard Boran and Jackie Groch.
I don't have the high-tech stuff, so I'm going to read it.
Pull that microphone over there a little closer towards you, and please face the Board of Supervisors when you speak.
My name is Pat Malkel.
Thank you.
Stop capitalizing on our problems. We can solve them together with compassion. Compassion, not war, breeds security. We're creating a climate, a war like climate, so... This is for those who are children. Everybody belongs. It's our world. We're all in it together. Climate change, we're going to be forced to deal with each other more and more. Philosopher Albert Camus, "When there is no hope, it is incumbent upon us to invent it." When there is no hope, it is incumbent upon us to invent it.
Albert Camus?
Albert Camus. I'm sure you've seen these around town. Humanitarian aid is not a crime. It's weird that we have to put these signs around. The whole world knows that. No more deaths, please seek solutions. Support the migrant worker, not flawed immigration policies. And the last thing from another philosopher, "You can cut all the flowers, but you cannot keep spring from coming. People all over the planet will continue to want a better life." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Boran, please come forward.
My name is Richard Boran. Yeah, thank you. I was getting a little worried, mine was the second card in the basket this morning, but thank you.
I apologize. We try and get them all done.
Yeah, we're operating on a first-in, last-out.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, okay, yeah, that's fair enough. I've worked in education for many years, including a stint at the Pima County Detention Center, and I'm also right now doing a little work on the side at Sunnyside as a substitute teacher, and at Desert View High School, where I joined the students, the brave students, yesterday in the walkout, and they walked several miles for their fellow student, Thomas Torres, who suffered a grave injustice, being handed over by the Sheriff's Department to the Border Patrol. And so it was a beautiful march, a beautiful event. We've all got to do everything possible to free this young man. He does not deserve this. Nobody does. There's a GoFundMe to help with his legal accounts, expenses, and he needs to be at his graduation in a couple of weeks. And I just want to ask the question, what is it, why does Pima County and the Sheriff's Department, but especially Pima County, even interest in partnering with Homeland Security and the Border Patrol, which have an awful record, an awful record of excessive use of lethal force? The Arizona Republic did a wonderful series on this about five years ago, highlighting how there's the total lack of accountability in shootings of these killings. I'm going to leave you this list here, Border Patrol killings on the Arizona border, and I encourage you to research every one of these, because if they're not clearly egregious shootings of people, often just in the back, they are highly dubious at best. So we have a responsibility here to avoid partnering with these types of situations. And I want to also mention that you should listen to a radio show called The Green Line, and it's a Border Patrol, by the podcast by Art Del Cuento, head of the local Border Patrol Union, and listen to the hateful speech he is espousing on that show, attacking the students that protested at the University of Arizona, saying he would have punched one of them in the throat, punched her in the throat. And those students have gotten death threats for this hateful... Listen to his podcast, please. It's on the radio. He's also attacked Isabel Garcia, one of his favorite targets, by the way, you know, for doing good in the community. But you've got to pay attention to these things. This is who you'd be partnering with. And please, do, you know, she's one of the founders of Dorrecio Somano's Coalition, that's who Pima County could be partnering with, the Sheriff's Department, not taking tainted money from the Homeland Security and the Border Patrol to have more tragedies like Thomas Torres and that family that was mentioned earlier. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boran. Next speaker is Jackie Groch. Thank you for being patient. Appreciate that. And you gave us your name for the record. You have three minutes, and our next speakers following Ms. Groch will be Nigel Valdez and Gail Camaras.
My name is Jackie Groch. I've been a resident of Pima County for over 40 years. In the last 20 years, I've lived in Diamond Bell Ranch, which is like 40 miles north of the border at Sassiby. So I encourage you, because I have seen for myself over all these years, that you pass these Stone Garden grant funds and dedicate them to law enforcement and the Border Patrol. They need all of the technology they can get and the people on the ground to stop this massive immigration into our country, which is spreading throughout the country. I believe that the problems that we have now are only going to multiply many times over. I've also seen Border Patrol out in the desert behind my house, saving people. I have seen them, you know, catching people that they need to catch. We have had drugs dropped in our own neighborhood, so we know there is activity there, and the sight of Border Patrol in our neighborhood is very comforting. I thank you, and please do consider the importance of this money for that association.
Okay, Nigel Valdez. Mr. Valdez, please come forward. Please give us your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Sure, my name is...
Gail, you'll be next.
My name is Nigel Valdez, and I'm in District 3, and thank you all for the time you're taking to make an informed decision. I live on, near the university. I work in finance. I'm a financial planner. Hopefully, I'm bringing maybe a different perspective than we've heard, at least since I've been here today. And I was raised Republican. I was raised to work hard and to believe in working hard and to support capitalism. And I do. I'm here to represent the economy and to talk a little bit about the basics of capitalism. There are only two sources of wealth in the economy, raw resources and real work, labor. A lot of the wealth, unfortunately, in Tucson involves buying and selling of real estate. In my job, it involves trading of currencies and stock, things that don't actually produce anything and don't add lasting, real wealth to an economy. My experience of immigrants, and it doesn't matter if they're here because they're running from the death squad or because they want a college education for their kids, and it doesn't matter if they came illegally or with all the right papers, they work hard. They produce wealth that everyone shares. They build the economy. Literally, in Tucson, you can't walk a block without benefiting from someone, from something that an immigrant has built. If you take a second and look at history, you'll see that all successful empires let people come in and work. In some cases, they incentivize, they even incentivize immigration, because anyone who understands currency and capital and economy knows that immigration grows an economy. Fear and paperwork shrink an economy. Criminalizing employers does too. Piles of paperwork just so someone can work cost businesses time, and each time you stiffen the penalty for working and employing, you kill the economy a little bit more. Say someone burglarizes your house in Pima County. It happened to us. How long did it take the police to arrive? Hours. Do they investigate, prosecute? Maybe, maybe not. The clear message is that if you burglarize, but you have the right citizenship papers, it's not a big deal. But if you work or shop or employ people and contribute to the economy without the right paperwork, we'll get you. What is the message we're sending to the next generation about the value of work? There's some politicians here who pretend to be capitalists. There's some who pretend to care about the economy...
You've expended all your time, sir. If you could complete your comments very quickly.
I'm asking you one thing. If you vote for more wasted economy on fear of immigration, do not do this in the name of economic growth. This is not capitalism. You might be increasing your personal bank account, but you're harming our economy.
Thank you. All right, Gail Camaras, if you'd please come forward. Thank you for being here, Gail, and being patient. Appreciate that most of all.
Good morning. My name is Gail Camaras. My sign says 4,500 is more than 300, which is the number of Border Patrol agents versus the number of sheriff's deputies. Pima County cannot afford Stone Garden. In addition to the misdirection of the sheriff's deputies from their core functions and the inappropriate, if not illegal, use of zero-tolerance stops and license tag readers, there are serious costs and potential costs to county taxpayers that are avoidable by saying no. To repeat some statements I made last year, the additional unwarranted overtime deputies accrue results in added pension costs not covered by the grant. And any liability for injury or worse to a deputy or a civilian will also fall on county taxpayers. The amount of the grant is a minor addition to an already bloated sheriff's budget, and the bribe it includes for humanitarian aid is not worth what it will do to Pima County's integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Next speaker's going to be Connor Welton, to be followed by Reina Figueroa and Alicia Thank you for being patient, sir. Please give me your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the board.
Hello, my name is Connor Welton. I'm a resident here in Pima County. I'm in District 1. I had to request time off work to be here today. That's how important these issues are.
I appreciate you doing that.
The Operation Stone Garden is not a question of national security or public safety. It's a question about fear. The attacks of 9/11, which were horrific and claimed 3,000 lives, were used to argue that in the name of national security, immigration enforcement must be moved under a new agency called Department of Homeland Security. Why? Because we're told that uncontrolled immigration could lead to another 9/11. That's where programs like Operation Stone Garden come from. National security is the continued rationale for the criminalization of non-citizens and militarization of the border. Public safety is the stated intent of these policies. That's the political atmosphere my generation has been raised in. But in 2019, I can see the outcomes of these policies. The national security apparatus is used by corporations like Smithfield Packing Company, who knowingly hires undocumented workers and then calls ICE when 2,000 of them are about to vote to form a union. I see this national security apparatus used to detain high school students, brothers, fathers, mothers, sisters, some who have lived in this city longer than I have. This national security apparatus is used to detain asylum seekers on a mass scale. Rejecting that worldview, that non-citizens and immigrants are aliens or vermin or an infestation to be controlled, is not a furek victory. Rejecting that worldview is the first step in moving towards an immigration system that actually acknowledges the humanity of the immigrants who are coming across the border. So I urge everyone on the Board of Supervisors to vote no on Operation Stone Garden, regardless of conditions attached. With my remaining time, I just want to say that the opponents of Stone Garden are often accused of being emotional and irrational. But there was one gentleman who came here and accused Supervisor Valdez and Supervisor Elias of being a foreign influence in our government that would help Japan and the government of Mexico invade through our southern border if we don't accept Stone Garden money. So thank you.
I don't know if the Japanese invasion is on my calendar, but... Next speaker's Reina Figueroa. Please, Reina. Thank you very much. And then Alicia, the follow.
Good afternoon, Chairman Elias and the board. My name is Reina Figueroa. I am with Mi Familia Vota. I'm the youth leadership organizer, and Mi Familia Vota is a nonprofit, national civic engagement organization that advocates on social and economic justice and issues that impact the Latino community. While working with the youth, I'm educating them on national and local issues that could impact them or their community members. It is important as constituents to stay nimble and ready to organize, which is why I've chosen to speak this morning. We ask that the board vote against the passing of Operation Stone Garden, and here are my reasons why. We need Sheriff's Department to continue to focus on residents of Pima County and leave immigration enforcement to Border Patrol, as immigration law is federal law. The passing of this grant will feed into the mistrust of Pima County Sheriff's Department within immigrant communities. We are concerned county residents associated with the undocumented will be discouraged to report criminal activity and from testifying in court on criminal cases. We are especially concerned over what would be a routine traffic stop escalating up to Border Control or Border Patrol. For historical purposes, I want to refer to the 2014 resolution declaring Pima County to be immigrant welcoming, which is... Our community values and our respect for one another should be protected. We will continue to educate voters and encourage civic participation and build political power Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Alicia, thank you for being here. Please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you for letting us speak here today. My name is Alicia Dinsmore. I live in Boat and Menlo Park. I am also a policy writer for the University of Arizona at the Department of Family and Community Medicine. I'm here today to speak to the current ongoing collaboration between Border Patrol and the Pima County Sheriff's Office in response to emergency 911 calls from people in distress in the desert. I am mentioning this because the Sheriff's Office has been highlighting this as a successful collaboration, and I'm with a community group that is actually, has actually publicly requested over 2,000 of these 911 calls, and we find that the Sheriff's Office regularly transfers those calls to Border Patrol. In 2015, they released data, the Sheriff's Office itself released data, that 70% of those call transfers failed to be picked up by Border Patrol. Since then, there has been no ongoing public publications of numbers around these 911 calls. The framing of public safety that I've been hearing here today is really concerning because these funds, these Stone Garden funds, they are enforcement funds. They cannot be humanitarian funds. The way that the Sheriff's Office and Border Patrol currently are collaborating on quote "humanitarian functions" is failing. We, these enforcement funds will put people into deadly detention situations, deport them to situations in which they are fleeing harm, and will ultimately lead to more people being put in positions where they have to choose to risk their lives to cross the desert. And certainly, the Sheriff's Office is not going to respond to those 911 calls because they currently are not. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, our next speaker is Fernando Baserto, to be followed by Rob McLean and Summer Aguilera. I believe it's Aguilera. Yeah. Okay, so Fernando Baserto. Not here. Okay, Rob McLean. There you are, Rob. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being patient. Please come forward and give us your name for the record. You have three minutes. Will be followed by Summer Aguilera and Paul Stapleton Smith.
He's gone.
He's gone? Very good.
Hi, I'm Rob McLean. Thank you, Commissioners. It's not often that I hear public officials named as racist, so clearly. But aside from individuals, I'd submit that we all participate in a racist system that was built and designed to be racist, and speaking of our laws as if they're inherent quality of the land ignores the fact that they were built in a racist system. So aside from individuals being called racist, I think we all have to consider the system we're living in and how we write the historical misconceptions of how laws and justice and This is about real people and real communities, and they're not being protected by Stone Garden monies influencing the Sheriff's Office. If the Sheriff's Department cared about the community, they would not be using their resources to arrest high schoolers and turn them over to ICE. All of this about drug dealers and sex trafficking is used to whip up sentiment against migrants and foreigners, quote unquote. I say migrants because that's what people are. Just because our racist ancestors wrote the phrase "illegal aliens" into our laws doesn't make it less racist. We have all been brought here through migration, either our own or our ancestors. Sure, there are issues at the border, but this fear mongering about migrants isn't the solution. If drugs are the problem, then let's address the demand for drugs. If sex trafficking is a problem, then let's address the demand for that. That's homegrown issues. Those are not things brought here by other people. Don't victimize everyone for trying to address the supply of our perceived problems. Don't allow fear mongering about the border to cloud our vision about what we need to do in our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Summer Aguilera. Summer, thank you for being so patient and waiting here. Please give us your name for the record. You have three minutes to address the board.
My name is Summer Aguilera. First, we need to recognize that we are in traditional Tahanatam land. You forgot this one time.
You are correct.
So what that means is, this isn't your... So what that means is, this isn't your land. This isn't even my land. As a Hopi Native woman, this land belongs to the Tahanatam people, and that needs to be respected. We don't have natural borders. We share the land from the north to the south, and that means South America. You're telling my relatives they can't be on their own land because you created borders, the American government created borders. A colonizer government created borders and is continuing to separate our people. Somebody talked and said that us activists don't care about children. Activist is good. We're actively changing the system for the better. But we care about children. My son is here. My son comes to all these meetings with us because he needs to know how the government works. Hiding the Stone Garden behind crappy paint, saying it's also children's seat belts and you must not care about children, is wrong. We care about the children who are taken from their families, and if you have ever been separated from your children or your parents, you can understand how horrible that feels and what that does to a child. One day of separation from your family and the manner that these children are detention centers, even our own juvenile detention center here, is traumatic. We need to address that. What Stone Garden means? It's continued separation of families, just as the history of the American government has always done. What has been done to my relatives in the boarding schools by separating children from their families, this is just a continuation of this, and Stone Garden needs to be stopped. I am tired of going to my kid's non-husband's house and getting pulled over and seeing the cops in their neighborhood and having my mother-in-law pulled over. She has my kids in the car, and they are scared of the police now because of acts like Stone Garden. They don't trust the police. This is what Stone Garden is doing to our children. We care about our children, and if you do, you will also say no to Stone Garden. I'd also like to point out that everyone's talking about rapists and violence. I'm a sexual assault survivor. I've been in domestic violent relationships. None of those men were immigrants or even Native men. Every single one of them was a white, male, American citizen, so that needs to be addressed here and stop using immigrants as scapegoats. Last year, I was proud when you all voted no. I pretty much have given up on the system until then. I'm asking you again, make your constituents and your community proud and say no again because last year, it really mattered. And last year, you got me starting to care about what goes on in here, and I've been here many times speaking to you. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, Emily Saunders is our next speaker, and to be followed by Paul Stapleton Smith.
Hi, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Emily Saunders. I am an Aho resident of about five years. Supervisor Bronson, we've met before. We've welcomed you to Aho. Thank you for all the time you've spent down there. I think you also know my partner, Scott Warren. I've practiced mental health professions for the last decade, including my time in Aho, and I work at our school and our health center. I would like to strongly urge you to not, to stick with your commitment to not approve these Stone Garden funds. I have deep concerns about them. I know that my Aho community residents and neighbors have expressed concerns as well. They're worried that these monies are critical for our local Sheriff's Department because we are under-resourced down there as a rural outpost. But I want to express my disagreement and explain why. I look at this differently. I don't think this is about the way the so-called community safety issue. I don't think this is worth the trade-off. Safety in our communities are determined from the bottom up. I'm a mental health professional, so we can start there by funding mental health resources. We can move existing resources. We can ask hard questions about oppression, racism embedded in our institutions, and practice true mutual aid and safety-making. My friends and neighbors of color in Aho are continuing to be racially profiled by what are called routine traffic stops in Aho, and there's evidence that people of color are still disproportionately pulled over here in Pima County by sheriffs working alongside Border Patrol agents during Stone Garden deployments. Sheriffs were supposed to put in place accountability measures to prevent this from happening, but the evidence is telling us in the last year, since this was promised, it hasn't happened. So I have deep concerns about whether or not that accountability process would begin now. I'm concerned this is a very, very slippery slope. I also want to tell you that my partner, Scott Warren, is across the street right now at the federal courthouse where he's facing misdemeanor charges for humanitarian aid work. He's facing charges for attempting to offer water to undocumented people, to offering food, beds, and pants to two undocumented people in our town of Aho. While he was arrested, the Aho Sheriff's Deputies assisted the Border Patrol agents in that, what I believe was, lawless arrest. I am deeply concerned about the escalation of this type of criminalization of those who stand in solidarity with the most vulnerable people in our communities. As a white citizen of the United States, I'm not as worried about me. I'm more worried about my friends and neighbors of color who do not have citizenship status. I'm worried about what's going to happen next. If Scott is being prosecuted for offering water and with assistance by the Sheriff's Deputies in my town, who I work with respectfully on a daily basis, what will we be seeing in the interior next? Will soup kitchens in the interior of the United States be prosecuted for offering food and water to undocumented people? Will it become a crime to live in a mixed-status family in the United States? Are we going to allow local law enforcement to participate in this escalation of racism and xenophobia in our nation? We actually have a chance right now. You, as a local governing body, can take a stand against this escalation of these xenophobic practices now before they overtake our nation.
You've expended all your time. Please complete your comments.
Thank you. We saw that this is happening with this week's Torres, Thomas Torres detainment from Desert View High School, and we know that it is a real threat. So I urge you, please, to avoid this devastation of our communities and Supervisor Bronson in particular.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments today.
Thank you so much for your time.
Final speaker's going to be Paul Stapleton Smith. Paul, please give us your name for the record. You have three minutes.
My name, for the record, is Paul Stapleton Smith. I represent the Pima Area Labor Federation, AFL-CIO. Very grateful for the opportunity to be here, and I thank you all up here for your service and for your tremendous endurance. We've been here before, and I understand everybody here has said everything I intended to say, and so I don't want to put you through that again. But I stand here absolutely in solidarity. I love that our sister used the word solidarity. What's important for us, on behalf of working families, is that you have an obligation to provide the respect and the protections in our communities and in our schools and our workplaces. And I know you take that seriously, but the truth is that we're looking now with Stone Garden once again in an overreach, right? A wise man once told me, be careful where you fund and how you fund, because once you allow that money and those strings into your office and into your operations, you now have to respond and be beholden to the source of those funds. And I haven't forgotten that because that's an operative principle. I do understand, from an administrative standpoint, there's a giant pot of money. Everything's relative. I do understand how difficult it is in these times to fund the operations that you all take so seriously. And it's imperative that we recognize that these are dirty funds. These are tainted funds. This is not something that respects and builds our communities. And the truth is that, again, we have an obligation to protect those neighbors, our families. My grandfather was an undocumented citizen of this country. When our system worked, and if we're going to fund something, if we're going to turn our attention to something that's really important, it would be funding our immigration courts and our asylum process. If our Sheriff's Office is underfunded, then let's raise the money here, which is what we're bound to do, and let's spend that without the strings that Border Patrol, which arguably has a corrupt culture, and let's make sure that we're doing right by our communities first. Again, I thank you for your service, for your attention. I know you take this seriously, and let's do the right thing. And we just don't need these Stone Garden funds taking this community apart.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, that concludes the public hearing part of this. I'm going to take a five-minute break, and we'll be right, right back. So don't go unaware. And Board, remember, about five minutes, we'll be right back.